Good evening. Welcome to the Monday, April 10, 2023 Winchester Select Board Meeting. My name is Rich Mucci. I'm the Chair of the Winchester Select Board. With me this evening is Vice Chair Anthea Brady, Members John Fallon, Michelle Pryor, and Michael Bettencourt. And with me also is Town Manager Beth Rudolph. We have a jam-packed agenda tonight. We're going to jump around a little bit to to start, we have a public hearing at 7:40. It's 7:40 on the dot. We're going to start with the first public hearing, which is a crosswalk at Wildwood and Wedgemere. So at this point, I would turn it over to Town Manager Beth Rudolph to start the hearing.
I'm here as Town Engineer this evening. So before I get started, I just wanted to introduce our new DPW Director, Bob LaBassi, is here this evening. We're very happy to have him. He is, comes to us from, most recently, the City of PBD, before that Middleton. So he is taking over for Jay Gill, who retired earlier this year. And we're very, very happy to have him here. So, thank you.
Thanks, Bob. Welcome. Look forward to getting to know you and working with you. You've been here a couple of weeks for good things so far, so congratulations.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Great.
So very quickly, this is a request that came in through one of our standard traffic, traffic review forms from the residents. There was a concern regarding the speed of traffic on Wildwood Street, particularly for vehicles coming from Cambridge Street and pedestrian safety in that area. We'll be doing some work, as many of you know, at the intersection of Woodside Road and Wildwood, so we'll be hoping to mitigate some of the speed coming from that end of the street, but the concern was for vehicles coming from the Cambridge Street side. So the residents did request the installation of a new crosswalk and a rapid flashing beacon on Wildwood Street at the intersection with Wedgemere Avenue. The Traffic Review Committee reviewed their request and recommends the installation of a crosswalk on the west side of the intersection at this point, and the consideration for the future installation of a rapid flashing beacon at that location. So this is a, just a plan showing where our existing crosswalks are. The location at the bottom of the screen here, Wedgemere Ave., at Wildwood is where we have the proposed crosswalk. There is an existing crosswalk at Yale Street and Wildwood Street, and then the intersection up here at Woodside at Wildwood is the intersection that we will be reconstructing this spring and summer, and we'll be realigning the crosswalk in that location. So this is just the aerial view. You can see at the bottom of the screen here is the Wildwood at Woodside Intersection, and then the existing crosswalk at Yale Street here. Our recommendation is to put the crosswalk on the west side of this intersection, so on the left of the screen. And this is just a street view of that, of that area. It does look like at some point it was kind of set up to have a crosswalk here. Should this go forward, DPW will have to install accessible handicap ramps at this location, and then we would stripe the crosswalk. So with that, that's really all I had for this presentation.
Okay, thank you. So at this point, if there's anyone here in the public who would like to speak on the crosswalk at Wildwood and Wedgemere, you can raise your hand and I'd recognize you. Come on up.
Hi. Should I stand here?
Come on up, sit in the chair. Just state your name and your address.
My name is Carl Amy. Address 54 Wedgemere Avenue, so right at the intersection.
Okay.
And yeah, I want to thank Town Manager Beth Rudolph for all the back and forths. Very helpful, very thoughtful around everything. Yeah, so it's, I mean, right now, we know that, I collected like 35 signatures from homes in the neighborhood. We know that a lot of kids live in that neighborhood. It's a wide street, so it attracts a lot of kids. They avoid crossing from the one side of Wedgemere to the other side, because Wildwood has become just such a, you know, highly-traffic, but also speedy intersection. We actually, walking around even tonight, noticed that even at Yale, people don't slow down for the crosswalk, so, you know, we're hoping that that rapid flashing beacon would help, because it's just, you know, it's, I mean, to your point, it's folks coming from Palmer, going around the Woodside Bend, and then speeding down, and then the same thing from Cambridge. But we know that parents are asking their kids to stay on either side of the street, and very wary of the crossing, so that's why we put this forward. There was, I think, two accidents in the last two years and a half, probably, on that intersection or right around there, and yeah, I guess that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Anyone else? Did I see another hand? Come on up.
First, thank you very much for bringing this to everybody's attention. I live in the red house that was in the picture earlier. I'm at 53 Wedgemere, across from Carl and Sandra.
What's your name?
I'm Rebecca Sandage.
Great.
This is really important. I mean, I have two little boys. We are out in the front yard all the time. One of their favorite things to do is sit and watch the cars go by, and they like to guess the color of the car that's going to come by, and we are acutely aware of how fast they go, and we actually witnessed those two accidents, one of which my boy's had to witness somebody getting axed, like the ax had to like get the person out of the car. It's really dangerous. And I didn't realize that there was going to be work at the other end of Wildwood, but those accidents happen when there's a lot of construction, and they take like waves, and the driving apps were really like diverting people, and so now it's a very popular route. But like now, I'm even more concerned with the construction, with people coming and taking that hard right turn onto Wedgemere to avoid the roadwork, and, you know, it's a pretty, it's a really dangerous intersection. I mean, the all of Wedgemere is, there's constant speeding on this road. Like, I think the, it's supposed to be like 20 miles per hour, but it is ridiculous, like how fast people go, because it's a nice wide street, and like it's long and everything, so just this, this whole area, I think, needs to be kind of revisited just for safety. I think in the past two years, I was just counting, there's 35 new kids in the two-block radius of this intersection, and most of them are under five. And it just, it terrifies me whenever I see people out and about, so just wanted to give another perspective, and thank you guys for listening, and, you know, really hope that we can make something happen here, because it's just, it's just, something bad's going to happen if we don't fix it before.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Come on up.
I'll be quick. Chris Stevens. I live at 74 Wetter Ave., WHS Plus of 99. I actually grew up on Yale Street, also on that side of Wedgemere that's kind of puts you in trouble when you're trying to cross over. And yeah, growing up, I don't know if I've used the crosswalk at Yale Street more than like maybe 10 times ever, so it seems like this stretch of Wildwood is such an interesting little piece of road, because so many cars go down it, but it's such a short stretch of road from here to get to the sort of like intersection up by the tennis courts. I'm just wondering, you know, any, is there any information or any plan to deal with sort of like the big picture? I know that the stop signs went in across Foxcroft a couple of years ago, maybe a year or two ago. That's been fantastic, because that stops like a lot of traffic from speeding through across the flats, the next sort of street over, but um, yeah, is there any information or any activity about like other sort of like traffic projects there?
So this is the proposed redesign of the intersection of Woodside at Wildwood, and so there's going to be a large, it's kind of hard to see on there, but there's going to be a large bump out basically at that intersection, right? So it's going to really, the intent is to really slow people down around the corner, and we're adding pavement markings for the 20 mile per hour. And when the board had the hearing, maybe in 2021, for this proposal, I think Carl, you came to the hearing and expressed the concerns that you had about the speeding on the kind of western side of Wildwood, and so our thought was that once this project is complete, we would kind of go back and maybe take some traffic counts to the other end of Wildwood Street and see if anything we've done here has, you know, helped to improve or slow that, that down. Obviously, there's still quite a long stretch before you get to Cambridge Street, but that was, we wanted to finish this piece of the work before making any recommendations about traffic calming improvements on Wildwood, which is why right now the proposal is just for the crosswalk to kind of improve the pedestrian access there.
I see. This is also a weird intersection, because it's a three-way intersection, but only one direction has a stop sign, and I feel like people, especially from out of town, if you're not used to it, you just think everyone has a stop sign. I saw an accident there a year or two ago. Looking forward to it. Thank you.
Sure.
And Beth, this is, that work's going to be done this spring?
Yeah, spring, summer timeframe. Yep.
This is for the Wildwood-Wedgemere intersection. So at this point, happy to have anyone?
One more, bro.
One more? Okay. So I was just going to say, if someone's already said what you were going to say, just for the sake of time, we'd ask that you just rely on what they've said. If you have something new to add, we're happy to take it. So who's next?
Hey, good evening. Al Goblin. I live in that wonderful white and brown house right there. It's 55 Wedgemere. I would like to echo the sentiments of my neighbors, and so the only thing I'd like to add is, is any consideration for a speed table or something that would be a little more substantial in the way of impeding traffic. I recognize that the town has often said that a speed table would be, it would be an impedance to some of the snow plowing. I think if there's any place in Winchester where we could use or at least demonstrate the need for a speed table, I think this may be it. As, as fellow residents have said, I don't know that some thermoplastic paint on the ground's necessarily going to slow a lot of people down, and I, for one, would do anything we can to slow down the people blowing through there. I'm also a little leery of just a flashing beacon as one, kind of a nighttime disturbance, should it be on 24/7, but also I don't know that that's necessarily going to slow everybody down, so I'd strongly ask that you guys do a little research on maybe a speed table or some kind of physical barrier that would force you to slow down versus just a flashing light. So, okay. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Danielle Perujon. I'm at 60 Wedgemere, so right on the other side. I also was going to advocate for a speed table. The other thing I just want to make sure everyone's aware of is that there is an elementary school bus stop right at this corner for VO. A number of kids get off right where that red house is, at Rebecca's house. There is actually a number, 10 kids, who we've actually asked the bus to stop at another location further down at the edge of Wedgemere, because nobody was comfortable, kind of having their kids have to be right at that intersection. It's all of the families who live on this, really that end side across from the White House. So we actually have created an unofficial bus stop just to get them away from the intersection, because it's such a large number of elementary school kids. So I think, again, a speed table, beacon at the least, but I don't think a crosswalk is enough. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, so at this point, I would close public comment on this hearing, and then open it up to discussion and questions from the board. Any questions? Beth, the proposal right now to start is a crosswalk at this point.
Correct. And then if we're able to have, obtain some funding, I think it would be a good location for a rapid flashing beacon, which it doesn't stay on all the time. It's just, it's pedestrian-activated, so it's just when a person comes to crosswalk and pushes the button, they can, they can cross. But that's not part of our, the funding we have available right now for us. And then I think, as I said, as we finish up the Woodside at Wildwood intersection, we can look at, you know, maybe doing some traffic counts in this area and doing some further evaluation of traffic calming measures.
Okay.
We tend to, you know, there's a speed hump going in on Wildwood.
Oh, on Woodside?
Woodside, oh, gosh.
At the, between the two, yeah, Winter Palm.
But what about sort of the idea of having a race crosswalk, or, you know, that being something that's looked at as we look at this end of the road?
Yeah, I think that's definitely something we could look at. There is, obviously, there's always drainage issues, right? There's a couple of catch basins right here, so we'd have to, you know, do an engineering study to evaluate what, what we, what we need to do to accommodate the drainage through that area if we did do a race crosswalk, but it is something we could evaluate as part of the traffic calming.
Other questions? Discussion?
Just one question to clarify. So the rapid flashing beacon, that wouldn't have the speed flash of?
No, no, it's just the pedestrian-activated. You get to the crosswalk, you push the button, so people know there's somebody in the crosswalk, and then you go. It's not a, it's not the radar sign.
Radar sign, okay.
So are there any unintended consequences of having a frequency of crosswalks? I'm just thinking, well, kids think that it's safer than it is. I don't know that it is, but I'm just asking.
Yeah, I mean, I think adding a crosswalk, it helps give a safe place for pedestrians to cross, but it's, it's
It's not safe. On Wildwood.
Right. I mean, obviously, the rapid flashing beacon would add another level of safety, and then we can, we can build on it with other, you know, traffic calming measures. That obviously helps.
One of the things I think that, you know, we've done that has helped is, you know, really brought those curbs out, you know, closer to the center a little bit, and I don't know about this location. I mean, obviously, that's a little bit of engineering, but it seems like if we're putting crosswalks without doing that, to John's point, it defeats the purpose a little bit. I think what slows people down is either the flashing speed signs, because I know, I mean, a lot of times I'm driving around in between places, and, you know, I'm not necessarily looking at the rapid flashing beacon in my dashboard, you know? So, you know, you just get used to going at a speed that's probably, you know, a little, little bit high for the area, and so it's helpful to have that information, but what really, I think, slows people down is when the road shrinks a little bit on you, so.
So Beth, if I'm to understand this, and I don't disagree with anything you guys have said, my understanding of this project right now is kind of start in order to give at least pedestrians a designated area to cross. You know, the intent of this project isn't to slow people down at this point. We're going to see what happens with Wildwood and Woodside, and then kind of, you know, go back that way and take counts. So at this point, there's nothing there, so engineering feels this is better than nothing.
Yeah, I mean, the sightlines are, there's nothing, no issues with the sightlines coming through here, right? Obviously, the speed is the issue, so just making sure that we, you know, we add the crosswalk signage and anything else we can do to highlight this area as a potential pedestrian crossing in the meantime, until we are able to add on, you know, another level.
In terms of narrowing, you know, over at Leonard, and this is an example of something that maybe works and maybe doesn't, we have that like bright yellow sign sort of in the middle of the crosswalk, which serves to pretty much narrow the road for you, and that you know it's coming, but I also know that gets knocked all the time, and, and, you know, probably isn't there right now, because it's been knocked down, but I don't know if even something sort of as simple as including that within the crosswalk helps to, you know, create that.
Yeah, that's definitely something we could have DPW add into the, into the road. It's a temporary movable, yeah.
The little post.
So is there nothing else? Is there a motion to move forward with this at this point, or what people think?
So I move we propose, I move we approve the proposed installation of the crosswalk across Wildwood Street and Wedgemere Ave.
Just a second. Okay. All those in favor? Anyone opposed? Hearing not a passes. Great. All right, so we're going to move on to our second public hearing, which is the Main Street Bike Lane Discussion. I'm going to open up that hearing, and we'll first have a presentation by Erica from Tool.
Thank you.
Thanks.
So the second hearing we have tonight is to evaluate the installation of bike lanes on Main Street from the McCall School to the Medford Line. We were back, we were here in, I guess it was late December, before Jay Gill retired, and Erica was here giving a presentation on her evaluation at that point. Since we met, we've done some additional field work, some additional evaluation. We've also included some recommendations around the Children's Own School, because they had submitted a transportation request to us, and before we did anything with bike lanes, we wanted to make sure we had kind of a big-picture look at the area, and we didn't do something that then we wanted to, you know, at a crosswalk or something in the future. So Erica's here, excuse me, Erica's here to kind of give an update on where we are.
Take it away, Erica.
Thank you. Thank you, Beth, and thank you, members of the board. Great summary, so I won't do the beginning part. So I'm back, and we had some great conversations with some butters, residents, neighbors, and some members of Children's Own since we last spoke. Just a quick reminder, the study area encompasses about a mile of Main Street between the McCall Middle School and the Medford Line. So when I was here last time, I sort of set it up as four different segments. Tonight, I'm going to talk, kind of be talking back to those segments, but at the same time, it might be a little strange and confusing, but segments one through three are going to have the same consistent design, which is about a mile of the, of the study area, and it's just going to be segment four that's a little unique, and that's about 700 feet worth of roadway. So since we last spoke in December, we attended a site walk. That should say 327, not 427. So a few weeks ago, we remeasured the street to confirm some width, says we had some concerns from the neighbors regarding the loss of parking on Main Street. So we did some due diligence, we did some more measuring, and the updated design is maintaining parking on both sides of Main Street for segments one through three, and for segment four is going to be the only unique case that has parking on one side, and I'll get into that in a moment. These are a little hard to see on the screen. See if I can zoom in a little bit.
If you do Ctrl+L, it will go do the full screen?
Thank you. That's a little better. Thank you. So I can So I can, what I'd do without you. So I can, I can read the dimensions too so that people can understand. These are just screen grabs. The plan set itself will be submitted to DPW and Engineering for final review and to discuss the kind of nuanced details of the pavement markings. I guess before I jump into this, I should just remind folks, I think there was a little bit of confusion from my presentation last time. This is just pavement markings is the scope of the work, and, you know, we're going to end up doing a couple of curb ramps possibly, but it's not a full reconstruction project. So parking will be maintained on both sides from Fairview Terrace, which is right around McCall Middle School, all the way to Town Way, which is about 700 feet from the Medford Line. Bike lanes will be on both sides as well, and the way it's going to be configured is, so the sidewalk will be on one side with curb line maintained as it is today, a seven-foot parking lane, a five-foot bike lane, 10-foot travel lane, and then it's mirror image on the other side of the center line. So parking will be maintained on the curb side. What you have today is a really wide parking lane and those narrow 10-foot lanes that are hopefully slowing cars down a little bit. So the idea here is that we're going to be putting a bike lane kind of in between that space. So the only distinction here, I will say, is that the five-foot lane and the reason that we had a different design previously is five feet is typically the minimum that I recommend when it's next to parking. We were half a foot shy on some of the road. And in talking with neighbors and kind of asking people around my office, we are going to go with a 4.75-foot bike lane in a couple of locations where it gets a little narrow. So I still think that's a really big victory to have some bike lanes on Main Street in Winchester. It's just going to be a little bit narrower in some spots. I'm comfortable with this because the parking, while it is utilized, is not, you know, kind of a wall-to-wall of parking on both sides. It's not going to be super tight. I do think that when cyclists are riding and there's not a parked car, they're kind of shy towards the parking lane a little bit, and if there is a parked car, they'll have to be more kind of in that space. The one location that is unique is just that 700 feet near the Medford Line, where you actually only have 41 and a half feet, so it's about three feet narrower curb to curb than the rest of the road. And in that stretch, we're looking at putting parking just on one side of the street. I apologize, they don't have a north arrow here. North is to the right side of the screen. So the east side of the street will have parking on it maintained, and the side of the street that actually doesn't have a sidewalk today, I don't actually think it's great to have parking along a street that doesn't have parking, or a sidewalk anyway, so it's actually kind of a little bit of a safety benefit there. And if you can actually tell from the aerial, a lot of the homes are actually not abutting Main Street on the stretch of road as well, so there shouldn't be too much of an impact in terms of their frontage.
There's, like, retaining walls on the property so people don't have access.
Yeah, yeah, it's kind of the backyards you're seeing on that, on the top of the screen. And now I'm going to switch over to the Children's Zone School. So again, it's 327, not 427. I apologize for that. We observed some drop-off in the morning. There was a request to add a crosswalk to address some crossing needs right in front of the school. The closest crosswalk is down by the Medford Line. It is, you know, far enough away that we did see a lot of parents not utilizing it. You'd have to, you know, walk pretty far up the road and come back around. You know, people are in a rush trying to get their kids dropped off, and we did see a, you know, notable amount of people desire line to cross Main Street in this location. So we, we kind of looked at it with the individuals from the school as well as DPW and Engineering were there, and we also got a, had a speed study done to get a sense of what the speeds are. The prevailing speed in this area today is 37 miles per hour, which is five miles per hour in one direction higher than the, oh, excuse me, seven miles per hour higher in one direction and two miles per hour higher in the other direction from the speed limit. It's actually kind of a strange, it's 35 miles per hour leaving Winchester and 30 coming in. So that is fairly elevated, and so what we're looking at is, the reason we wanted to get that speed is to ensure that the sightlines for seeing the crosswalk are appropriate. And you do have that curve on Main Street, kind of near location C that I'm showing on the screen, that had to be considered as part of this evaluation. So we looked at these few locations here, A, B, and C is just to kind of note, and you can see where Children's Zone is labeled on the screen there, and we, we will note that there is going to be an impact to parking for some of the sightlines to ensure that we can safely see those crosswalks. So we did run an analysis, and the place I'm most comfortable and feel that it will be well utilized and meet the demands of the crossings is location A, which is right by the Children's Zone School. This is a little hard to see too. I grabbed a plan set. I can describe this a little bit. So what you're looking at here is the crosswalk location that I'm recommending. The triangles are sight triangles that are part of ASHTO, which is a, you know, highway design guide to have a sense of the speed aligned with the number of, the linear distance you have to be able to see from a crosswalk to ensure enough time for perception reaction time to stop a vehicle if they see a person in the crosswalk. The red is the minimum sightlines required for 37 miles per hour. So as you can see there, so I apologize, the red is what you need in order for it to be safe. The black is what we measured to be available. So the red is within the black, which is where we need it to be in order for it to feel comfortable that those sightlines are appropriate for that crosswalk location. I have the turquoise in there, that sort of blue color. That is if this was a school zone. That would be a 20 mile per hour school zone, and then if people were actually going the 20, that's how kind of small the sight triangle could become. So this is a safe location for the prevailing speeds that you have today. You'll note that within that triangle, there would be some impact to parking on either side of that crosswalk, and this Children's Zone did make a recommend, or a request for a school zone, which is not part of this project that we need to move fairly quickly on as Eversource is out there and we need to get these markings in, but it is something that we could still continue to have a discussion on. So that's where I landed on the recommended location for a crosswalk at Children's Zone.
So if we did create the school zone, it would reduce the speed limits to 20 miles per hour, and what's the, what's the buffer on either side of the school?
Uh, we didn't, we didn't go into that yet, I think. It depends contextually, and it wasn't part of this project yet, but it'd be, you know, roughly within, I think you would kind of, it'll be context-related, it would kind of be around where Highland Ave is and where that first crosswalk is.
Can I just ask a question on that? If you're coming from Medford, there are signs that say school zone as you approach the school.
We saw that, and I don't, I mean, I don't know the history there.
Yeah, there's nothing with, with traffic speeds, but there are signs like...
It doesn't have the speed limit, it just says, yeah.
Yeah.
Yellow signs that say school zone ahead.
They look pretty old.
I don't have any historical context to how that sign got there.
But they would, they would be, you know, qualified to be a school zone if you serve, it can be public or private schools, as long as you serve any grade between K through 12, and they do have kindergarten, so that does qualify. Part of, part of the recommendations, there's a whole host of things that would qualify you to be a school zone. You have to have a situation where people are crossing the street too. It can't just be a school zone if there's no real kind of draw to cross the street, but we did observe quite a bit of people crossing the street there.
Just before, have you guys, is there a consideration here to put a rapid flashing beacon as well or in the future maybe?
It's, so it's not required as part of the sightline analysis, and I, I don't know that there's one funded today for, as part of this project, but it's not, it's not required from, from my analysis.
So what's the distance from the existing crosswalk itself gateway to the proposed crosswalk? What does that span from the left end of the...
Oh, that is about, I think it's 300 feet roughly.
It's longer than people would park and walk to that end and walk back.
Right. That was the end of my formal presentation. There was just a few next steps of getting formal review of the, the design with DPW and Engineering, and I know Eversource is fairly active at the moment, so this has got to move fairly quickly, and then continuing the conversation about the, the school zone.
So Eversource will be, do they start milling this week?
Yes, they start milling, I think Wednesday.
Okay. And the idea is that they'll, they'll pave next week during school vacation, then the pavement will need some time to settle, but the idea is that they, they would come in and do this, these pavement markings for us, which is why we want to kind of have the board make a decision as part of, you know, part of that project.
Okay. So at this point, I would open the hearing up to public comment. I'll say the same thing that I said to the last group. It's great that, I think there's a lot of people here for this tonight. If you have a spokesperson or if there's, or if someone conveys the same point that you were going to make, I just ask that you just rely on what that person has said. We've heard it, but if that, at this point, I would just ask you to raise your hand, and I recognize you, come on up, state your name and your address, and we will let you speak for a few minutes. Woman in the black, go ahead, come on up.
Hi, everybody. My name is Caitlin Musto. I am co-chair of the parent committee for the Children's Zone School. I'm here to represent our community today to ask you to please approve the recommendation of at the minimum a crosswalk in front of our campus and at the most a proposed school zone. Children's Zone School has been a part of the Winchester community for 81 years. We have about 100 families that are attending our school, and about 85% of those families are Winchester residents. Of those families, about 48% of them walk or bike to school, and the majority of our families are crossing that crosswalk or crossing where a crosswalk really should be. The next closest crosswalk that, when Erica came out, the next closest crosswalk to that Town Way location is all the way at the Grove Street Rotary. As Erica touched on, the speed limit is two different speeds depending on the direction that you're going in. If you're heading from town, from the town line of Medford towards, like, McCall, it is 30 miles per hour in that direction, and in the opposite direction, beginning at the Grove Street intersection, it automatically jumps from that area's general speed limit of 25 miles per hour, 10 miles per hour up to 35. And then as she saw with her speed study, people are speeding there. They're not slowing down. There's a speed feedback sign there at the intersection of Highland and Main, where the town did an incredible job addressing the safety issues at that intersection a few years ago. But if you look at the initial study that was done, leading up to that project being completed, our campus is mentioned in that study as well, and there are a lot of red flags about the overall speed and lack of safety for pedestrians in that area. We advocate for a school zone because it would lower the speed limit to 20 miles per hour, leading up to the crosswalk and our campus in both directions. And we do serve kindergarten class, so we do technically qualify to become a school zone. There's also two blind spots in either direction leading up to the school, which I think is part of the reason why people kind of step on the gas. I mean, everybody here has at one point driven, like, towards Route 16, right, to get to 93. You go around that curve, you hit the rotary and you turn down Winthrop Street, and there's this whole huge retaining wall with no, you know, front yards or anything. You get this illusion that you're on a highway and you just keep speeding and you keep going, and then all of a sudden you come around a bend at Sharden Road, and there you are in front of a preschool. And it's, it's a major problem. Jay Gill, before he retired last year, came out and did a walkthrough with us, and he recommended exactly what Erica's recommending today, which is adding a crosswalk right in smack in the middle of the front of the campus. Frank Bachelor has come out and done a walkthrough with us, the safety officer for the town of Winchester. He's recommended the same. He's sent officers when he's had the resources to do so, to sit at the intersection of Town Way, to even just flag people or give them tickets for speeding across that crosswalk. That crosswalk alone that is already existing, the existing problem, is just there's one crosswalk, it's not close enough to the school, and it's not safe enough, because coming from Medford, there's another blind spot. You come down the hill, people are speeding up because you're going down, right, gravity, and all of a sudden you're at the bottom of the hill and bam, crosswalk right there with families crossing. We have five pickup and drop-off times for our families at the school. We have an 8:00 AM arrival, an 8:30 AM arrival, a 12:00 PM dismissal, a 3:00 PM dismissal, and a 5:00 PM dismissal. Our staff is arriving around 7:30 AM, and some of our staff is leaving not until 5:30, 6:00 PM. So all day long, all week long, during the school season, because we are a school, we do close for the summer, there are multiple, you know, about 200 to 250 people are coming to and from our campus each day between those hours of 7:30 AM to maybe 6:00 PM. Anthea mentioned earlier a pedestrian safety sign, which is that big yellow object we see in a lot of the intersections. The DPW placed one there at our request in October. It has been hit about seven times since then. It is a neon yellow, 35-pound sign, the same weight and height as a average preschool child in the middle of a crosswalk that is neon yellow and is getting hit by people on a regular basis. It's just a major problem. There are a lot of people that are trying to cross this area anyway, not related to our school, because they're trying to access the trailheads that are in the Brookstown Forest behind our campus. Across the street from our campus are the very popular Fells Trailheads as well, so you have a lot of people that are kind of crossing that area in general. There's also a major bus stop for the MBTA that's right kind of in front of our campus on Main Street towards the Medford border. It's right there at that corner. We understand that we would be losing some valuable parking spots for our staff and our families by adding a crosswalk, and we are completely okay with that. This is much more important than a few parking spots to us. That's all I have to say.
Great. Thank you. Thanks for all...
Give.
Uh, next?
I thought Woody and I were going to come up together because we want to save you a little bit of time, if that's okay.
Sure.
No, no.
Just one there.
Make yourself at home.
We know that it's a long evening of hearings, so let me just say we're here with about 10 of our neighbors, but we've been...
You can all raise your hands.
But we've been elected to speak, although they may have something to say that we've missed.
And just to recap, we were here last time, and I added this afternoon, we represent 31 households and about 48 people. And thank you for getting us all together. We've not had this cause to bring the community on Main Street together. We've had a couple of gatherings, and so we, we view ourselves as a resource to you in the future. We want to say a special thanks to Beth and Erica for working with us through multiple emails and a couple of meetings. It's been very helpful to us. So in order to keep this brief, I'll hand it over to Carol to offer a quick recap of where we are and how pleased we are with the outcome.
Sure. Well, unsurprisingly, since most of us live on Main Street, some on some of the adjacent side streets, Main Street is very, very heavily trafficked. The cars go very fast, and I think it's fair to say that among our 48 signators, there may be a few differences of opinion, but in general, what we all care about is safety, safety, and safety. And so when we originally saw the proposal and realized that eliminating parking on one side of the street would lead to a lot of street crossings and also diversion of traffic, we got very concerned. We were really happy that Beth and Erica came out, met with us, did a little walkthrough of the neighborhood, and spent some time thinking and talking and remeasuring the street, if I remember correctly. Somebody came with a little wheel and figured out that there was a way to, to not create one we would consider a really significant safety hazard that would be incited if people had to walk across the street all the time to access parking. We're also very pro-bike. I'm always saying nobody's more pro-bike than me, but then I looked around the room and saw that maybe a couple people were. But we really are very pleased to see a bike lane on Main Street. We think it's important to the town and important for exercise, leisure, and a number of other things. So just echoing what Woody was saying, we are really, really happy to see a compromise that comes forward in the proposal that was presented today, and we really appreciate you taking the time to listen to us and take the time to, to come up with a design that we think will really be workable for Main Street moving forward.
We're also delighted that there's going to be consistent striping, as we understand it, for that four mile, so that there's not cars weaving back and forth as we've observed in other communities, so...
Other adjacent communities.
Who go and unnamed. But that, that too, we appreciate that, and we think it'll add to the safety feature of it.
We would very much like to support anything else the town would like to consider that adds to safety on Main Street, slows the traffic down, so we're happy to be vocal about that if those things come forward. But at this point, unless there are any additional comments from the neighbors, we really just wanted to say thank you for listening and for supporting a sensible process.
Great. Thank you.
Oh, one more.
Yes. Thank you. Thank you again.
You guys can sit down.
Thank you.
Hi, Nicole Sloney. I live at 254 Main, right across from Mystic School, and I just wanted to add a note because I was listening about the Children's Zone School and putting in a crosswalk, which is, I think is a great idea, but you're also, we're talking about like a flashing light, maybe to cross, and Mystic School really needs that as well. I don't know if that's something in the future you can consider, but crossing over there is super dangerous. People don't stop, even if you're standing in the crosswalk. It's very, very dangerous. So that's all I want today.
Is that the rec department building?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thanks, Nicole.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to comment? Who came up first? Go ahead, sir. Come on up. Then we'll go to Roger.[1778.04]
Yeah.
Thanks, Nicole.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to comment? Who came up first? Go ahead, sir. Come on up. Then we'll go to Roger.
Hi, my name is Bill Stavridis. I live at seventy-seven Main Street. For the last sixty-five years, actually, my house, but seventy-seven Main, about one house down from the children's school, just to give you proximity. I'm pretty familiar with the traffic flow there from one standpoint, that I've observed it for so many, many years, actually, the good and the bad with it. I couldn't see from the, demonstrate from the picture here, exactly where we were thinking of putting the crosswalk. Do you say the word? I couldn't see the picture from back there.
Yes.
Could you tell me where you're thinking of putting it, please?
Yep. So let me see if I can, I don't know which picture would be easier, maybe this one's better. So the Children's Own School is labeled right there. It's in black.
I can't really see that. My point to look at the other picture.
Where their horseshoe driveway is?
Yes.
Do you mind if I step up there?
Yeah, sorry, it's a little, we have it kind of scaled back so that you can see the markings for the contractor.
Kind of landscaped area in the front.
So here's the school, so my house is probably right about, eh, right here, I think that's my house. Yeah. So the crosswalks, where were you thinking?
So it's, there's like a fire hydrant you probably know about right there. It's pretty close to the fire hydrant.
Yeah, at the corner of Tomaway-ish.
The other direction.
Or the other way.
Yeah, the other direction. Yeah. So the, yeah, the horseshoe dr-
Is it the existing crosswalk that's out there?
Correct.
And so this is the proposed crosswalk here. This is the, either the two ends of the driveway, basically right in the middle of the landscaped area. Is there like a horseshoe driveway that they have?
Oh, I see. And here's the pictures of the houses here to show. So I was right here, here. So you're thinking of doing it just a little bit to the right of the house next to mine, basically.
Yes.
I see. I couldn't see the picture from back there.
Yeah, sorry about that.
Thank you. I won't take any more of your time here except to say that I try to bring another perspective to the group here because of my years of living there and my office faces right on Main Street. And I'm constantly hearing the cars, seeing the cars from when the motorcycle started about ten years ago. There's a couple of motorcycle shops up Mystic Avenue, Medford. Three o'clock, you can see them coming by doing wheelies sometimes also. So anything to support the slowing down of traffic would be appreciated, is needed, and it's very hard to do. We can put all the crosswalks we want, we can put all the other signs we want. It doesn't solve the problem, it minimizes the problem. So I'm glad everyone's in tune with trying to minimize the problem. May I ask a question on the bike lanes also?
Sure.
I wasn't sure from the presentation. Are you planning on continuing a steady bike lane from, let's say, Sims Corner to the Medford Line?
Yes.
Continue, okay?
Yes.
Because the children's school does park their cars of their employees all day on both sides of that street.
Yep.
I was just curious, how would that bike lane affect the parking of vehicles there? Will they be allowed to park on the crosswalks, on the bike lanes?
No. So it's actually wide enough to have all of it.
I see.
It's just the parking's going to be, right now, the parking lane's pretty wide and it'll be a little narrower. When you're getting out of your vehicle, it's gonna, you're gonna, you know, get out into the bike lane.
Yeah, I've seen Medford did that also. They're putting in, they're painting out white lines now where they're going to put their bike lanes and there's extra space there.
But it won't affect the parking aside from where this crosswalk is located. We have to be really thoughtful about being able to see the crosswalk on both sides. But the parking can be next to bike lanes without interrupting.
So you can have enough space there for parking cars and a bike lane?
Yes.
And traffic going through?
Yes.
Okay. Seems kind of crowded, but I'm sure you know, you measured it, you know what you're talking about. I am a, I was going to say quickly, I am a cyclist also and very much in support of that. I will say, most cyclists I know, and I belong to four or five different groups, even driving in Boston, which is kind of nuts, a lot of people are afraid to drive on a roadway. And because of that, you see traffic coming by a Main Street on bicyclists, it's very dangerous. It's very dangerous. Every year in the country, there's over a thousand deaths. Every day you can see something. Last week in Lynn, a person was killed on a bike also. So anything we're doing to support the bike lanes and making them really good, solid lanes without having to break off and come back in, I think would be appreciated. And that's what I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you want to say anything, Roger?
Roger Wilson, eighty-one Irving Street. You've never heard me talk about bicycles.
Now, go for it.
I just wanted to add one piece of new information. This decision was made before. Three town managers ago, I received a letter, I couldn't find it for tonight, said bike lane is going in from Medford Line to Winchester Center this season. And that was when Medford installed their line, their lanes. And I happened to be coming home from a meeting and saw that sign at the Winchester Line that said bike lane ends. And I took a photograph of it, sent it to Jay Gill. He had seen it the day before and he said, oh, no, I'm going to hear from Roger. And so he burst out laughing. But it's a very good idea. The plan looks sound. I think it'll work. In my own riding on the road, most of the time, there's quite a bit of open space. So I think this is a very good plan. But I do hope we continue to focus on bringing speeds down. Medford has put speed tables and they're extremely effective, and I can say this from a rider's perspective. They do slow cars down and even more importantly, they slow trucks down quite a bit. And so I would encourage you guys to keep the heat on with the goal of lowering the speed limits, I mean, not speed limits, but actual speed to thirty miles an hour below, which would render it a lot safer.
Roger.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All right. Seeing no one, I'll close this portion of the public hearing and open it up to discussion and questions from board members. Anything?
So I, this is my neighborhood. I live behind, at the end of the South Gateway, there's two houses there. I'm in the neighborhood behind the house on the far left. So I appreciate Children's Own wanting a crosswalk. I think it makes sense. The two-hundred-and-fifty people coming every day on North Gateway, over the last two years, last school years, we've had Children's Own parents avoiding Main Street, parking on North Gateway, parking on South Gateway, making it difficult for us to actually leave our neighborhood. We've contacted the school, neighbors have contacted the school. They have blocked, Martian Street has had Children's Own parents blocking streets and driveways. I'm not saying I wouldn't vote for a crosswalk, but losing additional spaces on Main Street will likely throw cars onto the street that I live on. And we've had instances where fire trucks and public safety vehicles could not actually get down North Gateway, should there be an emergency. So I don't know if anyone else other than Children's Own parent is here, but if Children's Own was here, I think parents need to be mindful of using the crosswalk or parking on Main Street. But the eight o'clock, eight-thirty, and three o'clock drop-offs are when we're trying to take children to the high school or middle school for school. And removing parking spaces on Main Street, I think is going to make it that much more challenging. So I think the police can spend, they can spend, they can camp out at Townway all day and get people coming in from Medford, going down the hill, speeding, no doubt. They could also stop at the top of Chardon Road, North Gateway, and see if an ambulance would fit. We need to look at it, I think, you talk about unintended consequences of, you know, crosswalks, there's also spillover. As fewer spaces are built on Main and cars creep onto North Gateway, maybe we need to look at no parking on one side of the street or no parking during these hours. But it's been an increasing problem on North Gateway. Only, I've lived here eighteen years, only in the last two years have we seen that phenomenon. And I had a parent when we were voting, you know, on March eighteenth, say, oh, North Gateway, parking the street all the time, I could go to Children's Own. Great. You don't park right in front of my house. So I think it's perfectly fine design. I think the crosswalk's absolutely needed. I appreciate sightlines. I appreciate the curve, you know, Chardon Road, the long wall and the curve, you know, right where Highland Ave comes in. I get that, that is my neighborhood. But I, that's, and that's not for Erica to solve for, but I think it's for us as a board and maybe for public safety to be considerate of the fact that putting in a crosswalk will certainly help those who park on the Highland Ave side of Main Street. But it may not, it may in fact, you know, encourage the additional, they walk down Marshant Road, it's a dead end off of North Gateway, they walk down Marshant Road, cross over someone's backyard into the backdoor Children's Own. And the fact that staff are parking on Main Street all day seems, that's, that seems like a problem. The Children's Own ought to provide parking for their staff on their property, not our town property, if we're trying to actually encourage parents to safely drop off their children and leave. The fact that we're actually dedicating curb space, which then throws it into neighborhoods, certainly unfortunate, I would say maybe borderline unacceptable. But that's what I have to say on that topic.
Michelle. Other comments, questions?
So Erica, I just want to be clear, because I drive down that stretch to Medford almost daily. And, you know, nothing against our friends in Medford, but it's very difficult, and I think maybe they're temporary lines, to see those lines at night.
I hope, yeah, I believe those are temporary.
And in rainstorms, and they zigzag and everything. I presume that when we do this, you know, and what we've configured here, this will allow for continuity, the lines will be bright, you'll be able to see them at night in rainstorms, things like that. Am I?
Absolutely, yeah. I mean, in my professional opinion, those are temporary striping. I hope that those look a lot better soon.
Okay. And we have like a comfortable, our bike, is there like going to be a color in our bike lanes? Are they going to be green like you see in other municipalities?
No, so, yeah, I think when bike lanes were newer, I think we went a little crazy on the green to get people like familiar with those being there. You really only want to do that if it's like a really high conflict area that you're really concerned about, to really flag that.
Church and Waterfield, we did a green.
Yeah, yeah. So like some, some kind of specific crossings, I mean, the only place that I felt like we would even warrant that at all would be Sims Corner. And I almost, like, we're just going to, for now, what I'm recommending is just some shared lane markings through that intersection. It needs a lot more work than what a bike lane's going to provide there. So currently, the proposal has no green paint.
Bob, have you talked to EverSource about the type of markings they're going to do?
Epoxy coated, yeah. Reflective, I believe it has a reflective sand in it.
Just to clarify too, I did want to just mention that the, we're not putting, you know, bike lane signs everywhere along the way. There's going to be no signage, except for the removal of that ends sign is part of that, this proposal, so that it doesn't say bike lane ends.
Can we give it to Roger? As a key take?
But otherwise, the only, the only signage we're considering is a crosswalk signage.
Erica, can I ask? I'm looking at, at an overhead map. So just past South Gateway, is that the section of Main Street that will have no parking on?
Yes.
The South Gateway side.
Yeah. So is that something also that will, because I imagine we're going from sort of a very sort of equal, sort of same on both sides of the road?
Yeah.
To that, that part where something might shift, does that, will that also have the impact of slowing down some traffic coming or going?
Yeah, so it's, it's kind of striking a balance because, you know, some neighbors were concerned about too much shifting and that can be confusing for drivers and cause safety issues. At the same time, sometimes when drivers are confused, they do slow down. This is going to be, you know, pretty standard transition zone, but there will be a slight shift. You can actually sort of see, if you have really good eyes, the center line is there today. We're shifting it ever so slightly. So it's going to be a pretty, really not noticeable, I'd say, transition where it's just shifting a little bit. If you were driving towards Medford, you'll shift a little bit to the right to accommodate the parking on one side of the street and not the other.
Okay, so not, not necessarily.
Pretty minor, yeah.
I mean, I drive, I drive through here quite frequently, quite frequently at drop-off times. And I know, I mean, I've seen families coming down from Highland to cross. I see people trying to cross, either walking over to the school or after dropping off. And knowing the speeds on that road and the way it is, I think anything we can do to make that a safer intersection, especially preschoolers are unpredictable, wildly unpredictable. And, you know, being able to, like, crosswalk important, but I think also discussing school zone and slowing the traffic there because parents of little kids, you know, you're carrying a child, you're holding a hand, gripping tightly in an intersection like that and making sure that we can make that crossing as, as safe and really aim to manage the traffic speeds there, especially with it posted so high, thirty-five in one direction.
All right. Anyone else? Is there, what do people think? Do this?
Yeah, I'm comfortable with it. I mean, I think it's been reviewed for a long time and certainly has neighborhood support. You know, it doesn't solve all problems, as we mentioned before. You know, crosswalks, you know, don't secure the safety of, you know, kids or families crossing or anyone, but certainly will increase visibility. I, you know, I don't love the length of the crosswalk there, you know. Again, I'd like to bring it in a little bit and, but certainly something that we can do. But I think this has to happen pretty quickly. To Michelle's point, that's a separate issue that we're going to see with any of our projects where we're taking away spaces and, you know, kind of forcing people into other neighborhoods. And maybe we deal with that by evaluating, you know, parking, you know, signs, you know, in that area and enforcing it for a little while. Maybe that could be a solution. I don't know, but certainly in favor of the project as proposed.
So I just wanted to clarify that the striping between Sims Corner and the town line will be done by EverSource. We will be on the hook for the striping from the McCall School to Sims Corner and we'll have to work with DPW to, should this go forward or should you approve it this evening, to figure out what the timing for that would be.
All right. Well, if there's no other questions, is there a motion that we should consider?
I move that we approve the installation of bike lanes on both sides of Main Street between McCall Middle School and the Medford Line and approve the installation of a crosswalk across Main Street near the Children's Own School.
Second. All those in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? Hearing none, it passes.
In terms of school zone, is that a separate conversation or is that something we can...
I guess we don't have an exact recommendation for what the size of the school zone would be, but you could have a general vote that would, you know, direct staff to evaluate and install a school zone. It would, like Erica said, it would be kind of in that range, bracketing the Children's Own School from like Townway to, I don't know, Highland.
Initial evaluation is that it is warranted and we could look a little more closely.
Yep.
Fine with that. Anyone else? All right. Is there a motion for that too?
I move we direct staff to work with a tool to evaluate and install a school zone, a school zone in the vicinity of Children's Own School.
Second. All those in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? Hearing none, it passes.
See, that's good, Erica. We can't just finish a project and then get to another one.
We've got to clap. I'm going to hold on to that for a while. I never get that. Thank you.
Thanks, Bob. Good to meet you. What happened?
Two and a half, three and a half. I have a two-year-old and a four-year-old.
All right, so we have other business, so I just ask if you all could file out so we can continue on. We have a late night, which is happening. At this point in the meeting, since we've cleared most of the room, I'm going to see if there's anyone else here for public comment at this stage in the meeting. If you're here for public comment, I'd recognize you. You have up to three minutes to speak. Just state your name and your address and you'll be given three minutes to speak at public comment. Seeing no one here for public comment, we'll keep moving along to our appointments. So we have several appointments for tonight. And here's Mike.[1782.04] We're going to start, I'm going to table H for tonight, the Traffic and Transportation Advisory Committee positions. We'll take that up at a different date. I don't think anyone was supposed to schedule, come in on that. Those were just two incumbents that were, okay. Yeah, we'll wait on that. And then we're going to go to the Senior Citizens Tax Committee, Kathleen McGovern. We'll start with you. Come on up.
Hi.
All right, Kathleen, you just want to state your name, and you're here to apply for the Senior Citizens Tax Committee?
I am. My name's Kathleen McGovern.
And do you want to just tell us, you know, a few things about yourself and why you want to be on this committee?
I've lived in the town my entire life. I'm an attorney, and a lot of my clients already are part of this, so I figured if I could help further, I would help and get more involved with the town.
All right. We've seen your application. Anyone have questions for Kathleen?
That's a great candidate, so. Your bubble.
All right. With no questions, is there a motion to appoint Kathleen?
I move we appoint Kathleen McGovern to the Senior Citizen Tax Committee for the term to expire March 31st, 2026.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Patty Elpstein for this one. He passes. Congratulations.
Appreciate it.
She's coming in. Is the next one, I'm just going in reverse order in case you guys haven't figured it out. We're going to start with F, Educational Facilities Planning and Building Committee. We have one position, we have an incumbent, Emily DeFlorio, to reappoint. No one else applied for her term to expire March 31st, 2026. I don't think Emily is here tonight, but is there any discussion on Emily's appointment? No one else applied? Any issue reappointing her? Okay, if there's a motion?
Move we reappoint Emily DeFlorio to the Educational Facilities Planning and Building Committee for the term to expire March 31st, 2026.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
It passes. All right, moving on, we have Council on Aging. I do believe we have two positions open, and we have two new applicants, Philip Bushy and David Campbell. David's here, Philip, why don't you guys come on up, both of you? We'll give you a minute to... All right, who wants to go first? You both raised your hand at the same time, so all to, Philip, why don't you go first? We have your application, and we'll start with you. Tell us why you want to be on this committee.
My name is Philip Bushy. I live and work here in town. I'm involved in real estate. I'm also a member of the Winchester Housing Partnership Board, and part of the reason I was recruited to be on the Council on Aging is to act as a liaison between the two boards. So as, as we get information about upcoming housing initiatives from the Housing Partnership Board, I can take that information back to the Council on Aging, and, you know, they can decide how to respond to the applications and goings-on with new housing initiatives.
Any questions for Philip? All right. David, do you want to introduce yourself and tell us why you're...
David Campbell, I'm relative, I'm new to Winchester, been here nine months, just retired as a busy vascular surgeon dealing especially with diabetes, working at the Beth Israel Deaconess. And I've been, and I'm now retired. I've been taking care of the elderly professionally all my life, and I've been involved with the Jinx, and it was suggested that it would be good for me to participate in this board, so I'm looking forward to it.
Any questions for David? All right, hearing none. I'll then open it up to discussion of board members. Any issues or concerns appointing these gentlemen to this position? Both seem like qualified candidates.
Appreciate their interest.
Yeah, appreciate your service. All right, hearing none. I think if there's a motion, we could entertain it.
I move we appoint Philip Bushy to the Council on Aging for the term to expire March 31st, 2026.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I move we appoint David Campbell to the Council on Aging for the term to expire March 31st, 2026.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Both unanimous? Congratulations. Next up, Committee on Names, we have one incumbent that would like to serve again, Sandra Thompson. There were no other applicants. I don't think Sandy's here. Any discussion on reappointing that person?
No, the only thing I'd add there is I think there are two open positions as well on that board, or one.
Is that true, Patty? I think there are, right?
There's one, it's actually two positions. Sandra's one, there's a, there's one vacant, and then there's the other two members are representatives from the council board and one from the school.
I know him. So...
So we have that reposted right now?
Yes.
So if anyone's interested on the Committee on Names in TV land, you know, throw your hat and the ring, you can go to the town website.
No commitment at all until it's called.
Yep. All right. Any issue with appointing Sandra Thompson? All right, make a motion.
I move we appoint Sandra Thompson to the Committee on Names, or reappoint Sandra Thompson to the Committee on Names for the term to expire March 31st, 2024.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Great. Passing unanimously. Next up, we have Commissioner's Trust Fund. We have one position, an incumbent is the only person that applied, Robert McIntosh. He's looking to be reappointed to a term to expire March 31st, 2026. Is there any discussion on his reappointment? Hearing none. Is there a motion?
Move we reappoint Robert McIntosh to the Commissioner's Trust Fund for the term to expire March 31st, 2026.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Great, passing unanimously. Next up, Board of Register, Registers of Voters, we have a Democratic position open, and we have one new applicant, Ruthie Gagni, who is here tonight. Come on up, Ruthie. So Ruthie has applied for this position with a term to expire March 31st, 2026. Hi, Ruthie.
Hi.
Do you want to tell us why you're interested in doing this?
Yeah, I mean, I've been a resident of Winchester now almost fifteen years. I'm pretty much everywhere, or as much as everywhere that I can be, except for here. I am the treasurer for the Winchester Democratic Town Committee, so, and I got talked into it by Bob Cork, that's all I can say. He's a very interesting, but I'm excited.
Any questions for Ruthie? All right, hearing none. Any discussion on Ruthie's appointment? I think Ruthie would be a fine candidate. I've worked with her in the past. I think she'd serve the position well. Is there a motion?
Move we appoint Ruthie Gagni to the Board of Register of Voters for the term to expire March 31st, 2026.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes. Thanks, Ruthie. Thanks for coming in. Great. So I think that leaves us with the Board of Appeals appointment tonight, which is, we have two regular appointments in one alternate position. We have one incumbent and four new applicants that are, I believe, all here this evening. So what I would do is probably call each of you up one at a time, and then, you know, you can state, you know, your statement of why you're interested in position, and then we can ask questions if there are any. So I'm just going to start with how they're printed on the sheet with people, so I think Bill McGonigal, is he here? Yep, come on up, Bill.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening to everybody else. Mr. Bedencourt, Mr. Mucci, you were here last year when I was interviewed. Ms. Brady, Mr. Fallon, it was prior, you were not, perhaps you are familiar with me. I have been serving on this, the Board of Appeals now for about a year. I was appointed last March. It is going to be a very rewarding experience. I have greatly enjoyed giving back to my town, trying to help various petitioners through the zoning process, and making sure that the town's interests were both protected and respected, both in the bylaws and what might come after in a, in a petition. With that, I have always made sure that petitioners are fully informed as to what they're going through. It's not a fun process, it's not an easy process, it's not a clear process, and I've always striven to make sure that they leave the room, we're done with them, understanding what's going on to the best of my ability. Following that, I've made sure that every opinion that I've been responsible for writing has been turned in quickly, that includes thorough factual recitation and legal analysis, so that there is no question as to what we did, why we did it, and to ensure that it will hold up in court if challenged. I'm happy to say that nothing that I have written has been challenged since I've been on the board, and some of those have been very contentious petitions. With it, I have engaged in a lot of debate with petitioners. I have bent over backwards to make sure that they are getting the results that they deserve in a way that comports with the bylaws and the interests of the town, which, given the state of our bylaws, is not always easy to do. Many of them are represented with no assistance from counsel, but by themselves, and so I try to make sure that they've always been given a clear path through the process once they come to us. And many of them have come to me afterwards thanking my diligence and respect and communication, both petitioners and the butters and other members of the community. That is a practice that I wish to continue, and that I have great taken great enjoyment. I think it has served both the individual petitioners and the town, and that's something I want to continue, especially as we head into the coming years of our town. There are a number of petitions that are going to be very complicated and require a lot of work in the very near future. For April 20th by itself, we are scheduled to begin a 40B process. Now, that is a massive undertaking that requires a lot of background knowledge that I have already begun studying and becoming engaged with, and to best serve the town, we need to make sure that we have a board that is staffed with people who are familiar with that process and everything that must be done to make sure that it's done properly. Beyond that, there was a question, and I think a very fair one, that was posed, I think, by Mr. Mucci last year when I was first applying, as to whether or not I could be an independent member of the board. And to make sure that there's no question about that now, I have been, certainly. There were specific questions as to whether or not I would be beholden to the chair. I have not been. I have disagreed with the chair on many occasions. I have voted against him on many occasions. I have debated with him and disagreed with him in many occasions as well. I think that every member of the board has to be independent, and I believe I have been and will continue to be, because that's the way this board needs to work. My interests are not mine, my interests are the town. That is what I've always respected, and that is what I will respect going forward as a member of the Board of Appeals. And so I would ask you to please reappoint me for a full term beginning now.
Thank you. Any questions for Bill?
Yeah, I do, Bill. You know, you said the ZBA process isn't clear, and one gets the impression that it's for applicants, it's like going to the meat grinder and quite often coming out dissatisfied with the whole process. So I'm sensitive that these are residents, taxpayers, and, and, you know, you guys do a good job. How would you make the process better? Not for our current parent, that's what we use, like, how is it, so everyone doesn't have to be very well-heeled to come before the ZBA, have consultants and attorneys and architects and engineers, because most people can't afford that.
Not at all.
So what are your thoughts on that?
Sure. I have already contributed to many efforts to try to clarify our forms. I think that it would be a great service to all petitioners if they had two, two different sources of resources from the beginning. One, a quick cheat sheet that really tells them what they need to do, and secondly, forms that guide them through the process and give them a full expectation. I have worked to revise our forms, and we have done that, I think, most recently voting to do so in our February hearing, in a way that gives applicants, petitioners, a thorough checklist through everything they have to do. Now, there's more that we can do, and there's more that I would like to do. And if I am appointed to a full term beginning this month, I would hope that I can be part of a process, along with other boards and committees in town, to reapproach our zoning bylaws and perhaps revise them in a way that not only reflects our town's interests and policies, but writes them in a common, common sense English approach that a non-lawyer understands, so that you don't have to hire counsel to go through the process, so that an average person can pick up the bylaws, understand where they have to look and what they have to do, and what the process is going to entail. As it is right now, that's not very clear, and I am a lawyer. I have spent a lot of time with these bylaws, and I think they can be improved, and I would love to be able to serve my town by working on that effort.
So if someone has an addition, and they put their house, let's call it eight hundred square foot, rather more than a garage, whatever the case may be, do you think that should be four, six, or eight meetings before the ZBA to get that approval? Or maybe denied? Do you think that's reasonable, or do you envision a process where you have clearly articulated the boxes to be checked off, and they show are prepared, and they could go through a fast-track process, for example?
Well, can I tell you what my optimal approach to ZBA hearings would be?
Yes.
My optimal approach would be, a petitioner files their petition, the various boards and committees that need to weigh in, all do that with sufficient time for a hearing that gives the board sufficient time to review all that material. The petitioner then comes to this table. All the Board of Appeals would need to do is ask any pending questions that are not obvious, and if those are answered, they are out within ten minutes. And that has happened with a few petitions. It has not happened with enough because there is ambiguity and miscommunications between the boards.
Do you think some of the other boards are refusing to finish their work because they have a sense that it's just going to get canned when it comes before your group, and they're not, they're, they're not willing to waste their time or invest their time?
I hope not. In fact, I put a significant amount of deference to what the other boards say. I'm a lawyer. I am not a designer, I am not an architect. I need to rely on the Design Review Committee to make sure that they believe a petition comports with the bylaws and the elements such as, does this proposed addition or change avoid any unnecessary departure from the local character of the neighborhood? I want the Design Review Committee to tell me that explicitly. I want the Historical Commission to tell me, is this protecting a historical resource or not? Because they're, they're the experts on that.
So you agree you would defer to their decision or recommendation?
I not only agree with that, Mr. Fallon, I have practiced that, and when other members of our board have disagreed with some of the under, the other boards in town, I have always gone back to what the, those boards have said, because I trust in their expertise, and I don't see it necessary to put applicants through repeatedly defending and changing their applications. If it meets the requirements of the law, if it meets the needs of the other boards, I see the Board of Appeals as being there to make sure all the necessary boxes are checked, and the town is protected, and those boards are respected, not for me to weigh in with my own personal opinions about something.
Thank you.
So just to, before I lose my train of thought, to piggyback on what John said, so when you say that, so is it that you need these petitioners to get approval from these subboards like Design Review, like the ConCom, you know, name the board, Historical, before you would even take up the issue?
They do already, Mr. Mucci. They all pass through those boards before they come to us.
So they need a positive outcome at each of those boards, which require several hearings before you just weighing, you know, well, Historical didn't approve, but, you know, I'm going to take that into consideration versus, you know, having them, because, you know, you could spin your wheels at the Historical Commission for several meetings, right?
I've never seen that happen with the Historical Commission.
Okay, how about Design Review?
I've never seen that happen with the Design Review.
So you think...
The Design Review has given specific changes that need to happen to a petition. The Design Review has explicitly said, please make these altercations or alterations, and please come back to us with your new designs. And we have respected that because that's what the Design Review Committee is supposed to do, just like I would not want to take away from your authority as a stakeholder.
But at no point will you consider an application, I'm just trying to understand your, your ideal, ideal setup here for an applicant. At no point would you consider an application until they've appeased all those subboards?
I didn't say that.
Okay.
I told you what my optimal approach would be, and there are times when petitioners go through all those boards, and they come to us, and there are some rough edges in their petition, and that's when I have done everything I can to make sure that petition can be resolved that same night. I don't like sending people back. I don't like extending a process. It's not easy. I have worked to make sure that doesn't happen, and I want to make sure that we can continue to work, that it doesn't happen more in the future, and I think that can be done with some tweaks to our forms, tweaks to our bylaws and everything else. But as it is, that's not my intent, and I want to make sure that the petitioners get what they want, get what they need without wasting time or money, and that the town is protected, and that the town is respected, and that those other boards are respected as well.
Other questions for board members? Go ahead.
Could you describe, you've mentioned the sort of 40B process that's, that's coming up. Could you describe your background with the 40B process and some of your sort of knowledge and familiarity with that in terms of what is likely coming before the ZBA soon?
Sure. We started a process with town council just, I believe, two weeks ago now, getting a crash course in it. We received approximately one to two hours... We received approximately one to two hours of running through the statute, running through the applications of it, and everything else. With that, I have been studying both the forty B regulations and a variety of presentations that were also gathered together by Town Council to make sure they are applicable and that I understand them before we start working on the comprehensive review, which is required by forty B. There's also a forty B handbook that I've been reading to make sure that I fully digest that, because the forty B process, if you're not aware of it, puts everything in the ZBA's kind of management. It's very different from what you were just talking about, Mr. Mucci, where they go one by one from board to board. And if you already know this, I'll stop explaining it. But it's the sort of thing where the ZBA needs to be equipped not only with its own understandings of its own process, but also the interests of those other boards and how they interlock, so we make sure that they are brought to the table as necessary, and we end up with a process that is best for the town and defensible as well. It's an ongoing negotiation and one that will start next week, and I'm hoping we can conduct it efficiently.
I have two questions.
True.
Going back to something you said earlier around miscommunication of the various boards that petitioners have to go in front of. Who handles the communication from zoning board appeals? Those other boards, is that you, do you, member to member, peer to peer? Is it chair to chair?
I wish, I wish it was that easy, Ms. Pryor. Unfortunately, due to our open meeting law, such convenient and casual discussions not really smiled upon. So everything is really done through minutes. We have had in the past year a number of meetings with some of those other boards to explain to them what can be done to better improve the process. Because when we receive minutes that say explicitly what was done by, say, the Design Review, and what they require out of a petition, that moves everything along faster for everybody. And that is the sort of thing that can prevent a petitioner from having to go back and see a board again to make sure that that board has been given the chance to review a change in a petition. And some of the boards have done a very good job, I think, of giving us that sort of extra communication and making things explicit in their minutes, so we know what happened. I wish I had the time to go to every single board meeting for the Historical Commission, the Design Review Commission, the Planning Board, everything else, but I don't. And some of them do a wonderful job, and we continue to have a dialogue of telling them what it is that we can do to make each other's jobs easier.
Seems to me that if you have, so I get, like, who wants to go to everybody else's meeting? I don't think I'd set up for that either.
Yeah.
And I understand you can't have casual conversation outside of a meeting, but if what you need in those minutes is, please describe X, Y, Z from all of these things, right? I imagine you each need things from each other. And maybe people wouldn't always produce their minutes as they needed, but I would imagine a template of the decision, the thinking, whatever, that might go a long way if you have to actually act on what's written versus what you're able to witness versus the tenor of a conversation. Certainly some effort into, you know, send the minute back, or please update it. We don't have enough of what we need. This is the way we need to receive it would be useful. And I guess the other question is, your chair, is there a process? Like, does the chair vote turnover every year? Is it this time of year? Is it after Springtown meeting? I'm not saying you would look to change the chair, but what's your timing of the ZBA chair being elected or by the peers?
I believe that's actually on the agenda for our April twelfth meeting. Otherwise, it has been, I think it's every year around that time, and then as needed. And so actually, currently, I am the vice chair for the board, because the former vice chair moved out of town.
Ask it.
Other questions? Go ahead.
In terms of, you talked about sort of, correct me if I'm putting words into your mouth, but sort of serving on the ZBA in the interests of the town. Can you talk about sort of managing sort of impartiality or conflicts of interest? And if there's been any situations where you've felt that you had a conflict of interest with something that came before the board?
I'm happy to say that I have yet to experience an issue where I saw a conflict of interest between myself and an issue before the board. It's actually something I take very seriously. I'm also a member of Town Meeting. And because I am committed to maintaining no conflict of interest or avoiding any potential conflict of interest, I abstain from all recent votes at Town Meeting that I thought potentially implicated an issue that might come before the zoning board. Now, I am a lawyer in my private practice, but I am not a lawyer who practices anything that would ever get me involved in anything that would create a conflict to finish this with the zoning board. I don't have, you know, clients who do work in town. I'm not a real estate lawyer, I'm a litigator. If that ever got involved, it'd be a bigger problem for somebody, but I know virtually, I would never see that happen.
Other questions? Okay, I have a couple. Mr. McGonigal, when interpreting a provision of the zoning bylaw, should the ZBA consider the original intent of that provision, its common sense meaning, and/or something else?
Well, that's a very interesting question, Mr. Mucci. I'm correct that you're also a lawyer?
Yes.
Yes. So you are also aware that things like legislative history is not controlling. It can be persuasive, but it can't actually tell you what you do. You start with the statute, you start with the bylaw, and you start with the common sense meaning of that language. And from there, you move on to the case law. And you see how it's been ruled upon by the courts in other ways. And that's what I've done, because we've had to do it a couple of times now, and I'm blanking on the name of the decision, that has directly impacted the way that we look at some of our own town bylaws. That's the process. That's what has been upheld by the courts, and that's what we have to do. The legislative history, the intent behind it, that has to come second. And we can try to look at that when we can, but it has to come second, because that's the way statutory interpretation works.
When considering a special permit or site plan review, which voices in the application process are the most important to you? The town staff, committees, landowner, applicant, party and interests, or other residents?
They all have to be equal, Mr. Mucci.
And that's how you've gone about your business on the ZBA to date?
As I mentioned before, I look at the different committees as having an expertise that I don't have. And so I would defer to the Historical Commission if they're telling me something that is of the historical nature that needs to be considered, just like I would defer to the Design Review Committee. When it comes to the petition itself, if it's, as I already explained, if it meets the requirements of the law and if it meets the satisfaction of those boards, I'm not going to ask much more beyond that. And the petitioners deserve a lot of deference in what they're doing with their own homes as well, or businesses, or whatever else that might be bringing them before the ZBA.
What are your thoughts about current and future residential and commercial development, including the proposed affordable housing developments in Winchester?
I don't think I understand the question.
Do you have opinions about the current and future residential commercial development in town?
Well, I know it's happening, and it's difficult to take a position when I have to rule upon a petition that might be in front of me in the future. I think that development is something that has to happen in our town and every town. That's just the way of the world. And it needs to be done in a responsible and smart manner. And it shouldn't be just, you know, tossed aside for no good reason. People deserve a chance to develop their property, be it their residential property or their business property. As long as they do it right, and they do it in a way that comports with the town's policies and bylaws.
What do you believe is the role of Town Council and what role they could play at ZBA meetings?
To advise when necessary, to explain the context of our bylaws in the greater workings of the legal system, to warn us when we are doing something that might open the town to potential attack when that is unnecessary and undefensible, to ensure that we're following the proper procedure, and to answer any questions that we might have that they might be able to weigh in on. And I will give some accolades to, I'm blanking on the name, Adam, one of our new Town Council, who has attended some recent meetings and has provided some wonderful support. I hope he can continue to do that. That said, I hope that the ZBA isn't necessary to have Town Council there for every single meeting, because it's just not something the town should have to pay for in terms of the hours. Lawyers cost money. That's one reason why I want to make sure, I hope we can have, a consistent ZBA moving forward. One that knows the process, knows the law, has experience with it, so that we aren't having Town Council sitting there for no good reason. But we do need them. And they have given some wonderful advice that I have done everything I can to follow, and I think it's necessary, which is when we ask them the questions.
A few, well, I guess a few months back now at this point, this board threw me, as the chair sent a letter, reminding the ZBA of what our Town Council offered and the fact that they offered a zoning seminar for the ZBA. Do you know if that's taking place at this point?
It's being arranged, yes. I can't, and I'm looking forward to it. I read your letter, and I was sincerely disturbed by it. I did not like the fact that we might have been doing something that did not comport with the bylaws. It is my sincere effort and one that I spend hours on every week to make sure that I understand these petitions and understand the bylaws and making sure that they're being followed. If they were not, then that's a problem.
Any other questions for Mr. McGonigal?
I just have one.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. McGonigal, for coming in and your service this past year in the ZBA. It's a very difficult, high-volume job, as you know, and not a lot of people get to see the work, right? And my primary focus is something that was unique to the ZBA this year that I hadn't seen in the past, where only the regular members were allowed to discuss the application in the ZBA meetings, where in the past it had always had been public discussion and comments were from all of the members.
I disagree with that, but go on.
And that was my experience in attending ZBA hearings. So whether it's the case or was the case, what is your opinion? Do you think all members of the ZBA, whether they be regular or alternates, should contribute to the discussion around an application formally?
Yes, and I think that with, I can only think of one hearing we had where there was some confusion over whether an alternate could partake in the closed discussion. But other than that, the alternates have been a part of all the discussion. The questioning with the petitioners, the debate once the hearing itself was closed and prior to the vote. And again, I will give some specific shout-outs to Ms. Simboli, who does have some wonderful experience and I think has some wonderful perspectives. And she has been an alternate for a long time. And if I may, I hope you reappoint me to my position. I would hope that you would appoint her to the other regular position, because I think she brings some wonderful experience with her. And she has contributed to many of our discussions, if not all of them. Again, I can only think of that one instance where there was some confusion, but it was just once. And I think that our alternates, whether or not they are providing one of the final votes, bring perspective that needs to be considered. And it's one way of ensuring that the ZBA not only has a fulsome discussion, but continues with a consistent manner into the future.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you, Mr. McGonigal.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we'll hear from Gerard Marino.
Good evening, Gerard Marino. Living on York Road here in Winchester, have a lot of practice on Shore Road. Been an alternate member for almost exactly a year. I think I was in front of the board around that time. I've really enjoyed the time. I find it very interesting. I find it a great way to get back to the community in which I work and live. And feel that I can, the skill set required by the board is something that I have that I can contribute and help petitioners move through the process. I love efficiency in process. It's something I've been looking at and analyzing a bit as we, as an alternate member and trying to make suggestions. And we have discussed it, and we, you know, continue to work at it. I think it's something that needs to be improved and to continue to participate as a regular member.
Thank you. Any questions for Gerard?
What would you do for the process?
Well, I think it's going to be complicated. I think what I've seen so far is, and I've been in front of the board for special permit, and one of the things I noticed was there's no real, like, set format that you can follow from a procedural standpoint, once you're here, and knowing all the other boards you have to go up against and the process for that and how it all works. Janine is a crucial part of the process, but I also find it, it's probably a lot of work for her individually to manage all of the emails directly by the board members to maintain the open meeting laws that we have to follow. And so I've always, I've talked to the other board members frequently during open meeting, after, while the meeting is still running, but not any petitioners, and asked them specifically, you know, like, how do they know? Like, something simple from when they come in, do they know to sign in? Do they know not to interrupt when other people are talking? Do they know, are there rules of, like, setup saying how, this is how the meeting is run? And then, you know, what is given to them besides the application with all the questions which they get? Do they get a process of, this is how it's going to work, step one, step two, step three? I'd like to see that happen. I think it's going to take a lot of work, though. I think it's going to be a collaborative effort with the people in the town to make it a little better process. And I can feel the frustration with the petitioners from coming into a meeting, even if you're on a butter, for example, thinking you're there for a meeting that's going to be heard, not realizing that got continued. And, you know, or you come in as petitioner, you have your attorney or your architects or designers there, assumingly paying them for that, for that hearing, to realize, we don't have time to hear them. We have too much going on, and we have to push them to next month. That's, I don't, I hate to see, I'd like to see that fit, as best we can. It's not going to be perfect, but certainly I think we can put efforts out there that will make the process a little less painful for folks and still follow what the town is trying to do at the same time.
Other questions? Go ahead.
Oh, do you have more?
No.
Can you, can you talk about your knowledge and experience with the forty B process and how they're managed?
So forty B is new to me. I'm an attorney in town, and, but like Bill was saying, we went to the hearing with Town Council. I think Town Council has been a huge benefit for us as a board. Great resource. I've reached out to them several times about the specific questions I've had. But learning more about the forty B and really got to get into it. But, but one of the things that one of the Town Council said was just, like, learning how to shape the project, you know? Because that's really like, you know, they're, they don't have the same rules that a normal petitioner would follow, or so we have to work with them on shaping the process. And what's in for the best interest of the town and how to make the process the best it can be, how the project can be best it can be. But I'm still learning a lot about it, and there's still a lot of work to do.
How do you get a guidance for what's best for the town?
Well, it's largely, it's based on, I think, the bylaws, right? But, but also just living in town, you know? And, and we do have to follow what the bylaws say, whether they are totally clear all the time or not. My, my feeling is we have to follow what they say as of right now and not, you know, interpret them in a way that I don't believe it would be their original intent. And so that's, that's, you know, mainly what I'm trying to, trying to do. But it, in every situation, it's different. You know, we have so many projects, and you can't answer a broad question with every, under every single project. Every project has to present it, it stands on its own two feet. You have to take a look at it objectively and see, is this, is this fit within the guidelines from which they're applying? You know, is it follow what we're trying, what the zoning says? It's kind of the best, best we can do, you know?
I think it's a concern, perhaps, that there's intent versus the guideline. And so are some folks deciding this is what's intended?
In the zone, in the bylaw?
Right, versus what it says.
Yeah.
And so then people are complying with the bylaw, and this unknown intent pops up.
Yeah. It's, it's, I think a lot of it is just misinterpret, like, well, interpretation, not misinterpret, interpretation of what it says. So when I, I've always thought, okay, so if you read something, and you read it, and you believe it says one thing, and I believe it says something else, what do we do? Right?
So you form a friend, like, and go, and defer to them?
Well, you can, you can ask for opinion as to, I ask them more for, like, procedural questions. But I think that I've always looked at custom in the industry, what has been done throughout the years. If we have a difference of opinion on a particular bylaw, what's normally been the process here? Now, some folk- Now, some folks may think, well, what if it's been done wrong for thirty years? Maybe, but probably less likely, right, when it's been done wrong. If someone, every, every person who's looked at that has interpreted it wrong, now I interpret it and I'm right? So I think it's important to, um, if people are going to have differences of opinion.
Sure.
Right. And so if, if you have, you, it's, that's when you have the dialogue and that's when you talk about it and then you, you work through it and, and you come up with the best you can. And the, the problem is, is if you have a board with s- uh, one, you know, uh, one opinion, two years later you get a different board, they get different opinions on things. It's going to change. It's, that's inevitable. I cannot think you can change that. But I do believe having the bylaws be clear would be certainly helpful.
Thank you.
I just have one question. Um, I think it, it kind of goes back to Mr. McGonigal and Ms. Simboli. This question's going to come for you too, I think, when you get up here. But as an alternate, do you feel like your voice is being heard and, and considered in the debate, even if you don't get to vote?
I do believe my voice is being heard. I think the board did a, a good job at asking me when I was there and I tried to attend every meeting I could and, uh, knowing that I may not vote, but, but they would, you know, ask, what do you think? And I would give my opinions and I think that was fair, but I know when it came down to voting, that's when I wasn't heard. But that's just the rules, you know? So if I'm an alternate, I'm an alternate, right? If I'm a regular member, I'm a regular member. I understand that's how it works. But I did feel that I was heard and I felt like we always were able to have a productive discussion at the meetings.
Okay, and just to follow up on that, um, what, what do you anticipate the difference would be in your, uh, sort of as a role as an alternate versus as a regular member on the board?
The main difference? Well, I think there's, you know, as an alternate, I know there is a lot of, there's a lot of reading. There's a lot of, um, catching up on the emails, really digging into the, the applications. I know that it'd be nice to, after going through all that, to actually have your vote counted. But that's the, the main issue is because I think there is opportunity, like I just said, to have productive dialogue with other board members, whether you're voting or not, and, and just talking about a project. But, you know, to be able to vote on it too would, would be nice as well.
Uh, and you've mentioned that, uh, in your role, you've come before, um, the board before. Have you found that in the past year, there have been, um, situations that might have been a conflict of interest or, um, area that you've had to recognize yourself from?
I try to take every, uh, conflicts of interest very seriously. I take a look at them. Uh, I've reached out to town council and asked them, is there, do you think there's a conflict interest in this? As a, an attorney in town, and, and the answer's always been, um, a, a good explanation, but no, I don't believe it is. Like, uh, they once said, you know, if you had to, like, conflict your, out, yourself out every single time you refinanced someone's property, you'd never do any work in town. So they've said that, you know, you, you don't, I asked them, but I feel like I can mitigate those issues right away and right up front, which I've tried to always do.
Anyone else? All right. Gerard, I just have a couple.
Sure.
Just someone's same questions that I just asked. Whose voices are the most important in special permit or site plan review applications? The town staff committees, landowners, the parties in interest, or other residents?
I think everyone needs, their voices need to be heard. So we have this process set up. We have boards that their opinions are, um, they're voted on. We need to take those in consideration. We need to look at the zoning. We need to look at the, the petitioner. Everyone's situation's different, so they need to explain theirs. I remember doing the same thing with mine, like, my design looked a little wonky because I had a staircase in the middle of my house and if I didn't explain it, nobody would really understand why I was making this dormer bigger than normal. But after explaining it, the board was like, yeah, I get it now, sure. So you have to be able to explain it. So everyone's voice needs to be heard equally. And then you, you look at the, the bylaws and you try to vote appropriately.
To that extent, when we're talking about the other committees, like design review?
Yeah.
CONCOM, um, you know, historical, um, is it, y- your opinion in the process that in order for the, for it to move forward, they, you know, these, these petitioners need to go and get a favorable result? And keep going to these committees until they get a favorable result? Or is there some point where you just take that as guidance and you?
I look at it as guidance. Um, I think it's important to hear what they have to say. We have these boards for a reason. Um, but I don't believe, like, if, if they're the end-all, be-all. I think once everyone, you're not, maybe you don't get a unanimous vote. Maybe you get, you know, six to, you know, five to one and, but who knows? And, but I think it's important to look at them, but I, I also don't want to do their job for them at, at the ZBA level. Like, want them to have the petitioner to come here, having already have been in front of the boards, and take what the boards have to say, understand it, listen to the petitioner, and then decide. And not, I'd like, you know, not to have to see them send it back. Some folks actually just want to go back to certain boards and they want positive feedback from the boards before they move forward and they decide unilaterally to do that. Can't tell them they can't, you know, so, um, but that's what I-
And my last question for you, what are your thoughts about current and future residential and commercial development in town, including the proposed affordable housing development?
Well, I think, uh, throughout history, you know, things get built, right? The question is, um, are we as a town trying to at least maintain some order and make sure whatever's being built is a positive effect for the town? And I can't say if something that's being built is a positive or negative until it's brought up, until it's, it's explained. But I don't think you can stop building, like, I think, meaning like, it's, it's going to happen. So we as a town have to, we have these boards, we have the zoning, it's, it's an arduous process. And you do your best you can to make sure that what's happening and what's being built is being done correctly and, you know, trying to limit the negative side effects that can occur when you build something. You have to consider all things. So I think you have to shape that as a bo- as, as the boards that we have. They need to shape the projects to decide if they fall within the guidelines set forth.
I think you've answered my other questions and your answers to everyone else's questions, so thank you. Any other questions for Gerard? Turn on.
Thank you.
Thanks. Um, next up, Dorothy Simboli, who's also presently an alternate member of the board. Hey, Dorothy.
Hi, how are you?
You want to start by just telling us, uh, your interest in serving as a permanent member?
Um, well, I've been an alternate since 2016. Um, I've seen the board reconstituted several times. And there's been changes over the years and, and, you know, at the beginning I was a novice member. There were a lot of people with a lot more experience than I had. We had civil engineers, we had architects, we had lawyers, um, and I learned a lot from them. And I, you know, observed that process. And now I find myself to be one, the longest-serving member on the board. And, um, because we're conducting it, you know, we're running our meetings a little differently in terms of how, the, the decision-making body at the end. Um, I find myself not being able to participate as much as I'd like to participate. I'd like to, you know, you brought up the fact that there were some me- a couple of meetings where I was not allowed to partake as an alternate. And I was certainly not allowed to vote on many matters as an alternate. And I, I felt sort of, hmm, like, I need to step to the plate here because I have a lot more knowledge and experience than the people who are deciding these matters. So that's the main reason I want to be a full member at this point.
Questions for Dorothy?
So you, Dor- Dorothy, you mentioned, uh, how the decision-making has changed. I haven't tracked that, so I wouldn't know, so maybe you can just tell me over the last seven years or six years, how it's changed?
Yeah, that's a legit question. So when I, uh, when I joined the board, we had, uh, we had full, we had a full board. We had three alternates and we had three full members. And, um, whoever attended the meeting, because alternates, you know, you didn't necessarily need to attend if there were five other people attending, but whoever attended the meetings, and you have to attend every hearing, you know, on a decision if it gets continued to the petition, if it gets continued to the next meeting, you have to be there for it. But at the end of the hearing, then the deci- then the board would be constituted. That's just how Joan, I think it was Joan, and I can't remember who was before her ran things. And so while you were listening to it, you didn't necessarily know if you were going to be voting on it or not. You were fact gathering the entire time. You were listening to all the information. And then, once the meeting was closed and it came time to vote, then the board would be constituted. And so sometimes I would be on the decision and sometimes I wouldn't.
So it just allowed you to be more engaged?
Excuse me?
Yeah, it allowed you to be more engaged.
Yeah, it did. But that wasn't, that, but that's not what our rules actually say. So our chair pointed out that, you know, we had not been doing it correctly during that time. So, but I felt like it was a very, I felt like it kept everyone super objective, to be quite honest with you. Because you showed up, you listened to the facts, you didn't know if you were going to be voting on it or not. And then you either got assigned to it or you didn't get assigned to it. I felt it kept a little bit of, um, I don't know, objectivity to the process.
Thank you.
So an alternate never votes?
You vote if there, if a full member isn't present. So, um, let's say we have a-
So it'll always be at least three votes on every decision?
Yes, correct. And, um, and if you, so let's say, you know, one meeting, one of the full members can't be there and the alternate comes to that meeting and let's say that petition gets continued, well, that full member then can't hop on to the next one-
Stay with the topic.
Because you have to be present for the entire hearing, which got continued.
How do you decide which alternate votes if there's two of you in the room?
So the chair will, I think, assign, you know, basically will say, this is, this is, this is what constitutes the board. But I believe that process happens earlier.
Okay. And is it a question of like, again, process? But, so Mike and I are alternates and we, we're really good about showing up, because that's what we do. So, and John's the full member and he's not there that, those couple of weeks, right? So do I get a vote and then the next time Mike gets the vote? Or the chair can decide that I, I keep getting the vote and Mike, God bless his good attendance?
I think it's, I, I think the chair, eh, from what I've observed, it really is, has been about, like, who can show up for all of those meetings, who's been at the meeting. It's, it's very much logistics. There's no bias involved.
Well, I wasn't implying bias to each other, which is kind of like every other.
Yeah.
I don't think there's been enough, I don't think there's been enough situations like that. It's usually just logistics of people's schedules and juggling and making sure that we have, you know, a full board, you know, for, for each here, for each petition.
And I understand that it, that now you have two regular and two alternate positions, uh, on the, filled on the board.
We do, right now during this little window, last meeting, I was, because you, legally, we have to have three full members. So right now I'm the interim full member, until you guys appoint the next full member. Because that was what the chair and the other full member decided last meeting.
Um, can you, uh, you've sort of been in that role a little bit, but can you talk about any differences you would see between serving as an alternate member and serving as a full member of the board, knowing you've seen, um, you've seen quite a range of things in the past seven years?
Oh, gosh. I mean, I think the hiccup that we had with the new chair and alternates not being able to fully participate, that's resolved itself. So, um, I think in terms of hearing the facts and having the discussion, I think the alternates participate fully in that way, if they're present for the meeting. They're just not ultimately voting and they're not writing the decisions either. Did that answer your question?
Yeah, that's great. Thank you. Um, and then, eh, have you had any, um, situations where you've had any conflicts of interest or areas where you felt you needed to sort of maintain, sort of some level of, uh, distance from anything that's come before the board?
Um, so I just participated in the open meeting law conflict of interest seminar that town council ran. And, um, I guess sort of what I considered a conflict of interest before wasn't even really a conflict, conflict of interest. I don't operate a law practice in town. I, not at all. I don't, um, have any sort of financial interests, you know, in any sort of development or anything within the town of Winchester, um, or close family members that do. So, um, or family members that do it all. So I don't really have any conflicts of interest, but there was a case where I did recuse myself. Um, we had some other members that, you know, didn't have sort of any sort of friendship or relationship or anything with, um, uh, both the petitioner and the, um, neighborhood, that neighbor, neighborhood members that were objecting to it. So I just said, you know, I'm just going to recuse myself from this matter because I didn't want to participate in it. I knew, I knew people on both sides too, too much. And there were other mem- people that were willing to serve, but it really wasn't a true conflict.
Uh, and then I'll just ask, uh, also, uh, to you about the 40B process and your experience with that and your, um, knowledge and understanding of it.
So I did, so, um, I did partici- uh, no, we are, yeah, we, I did participate in the crash course that, um, town council offered. And I am refreshing my memory on the process. I did sit in on most of the River Street meetings, um, for that 40B. So I do have an understanding firsthand of how that process works. I can describe a little bit my perspective on it. So like when we get a matter, a, a regular matter, um, and it goes before all the other boards and committees, when the petitioner's in front of them, it's very collaborative. Like, they may come up with their housing design and design review committee may say, oh, do you mind moving that window over this way or we don't like the roof line of this? And, and they, they work with them. So like, by the time everything gets to us, we're sort of fact-finding and we're applying the, the law to the facts of, of the situation. It's not, we're not really so collaborative with the petitioner at that point because they've already collaborated with all these other boards and they, they, by the time they get there. A comprehensive permit on a 40B is a collaborative process. We are all of those committees. So they're, it's, they're not going to go in front of design review committee. I mean, we certainly could consult with design review committee and town council encouraged us that we should. But we are the collaborator and that's what I witnessed at, in the River Street 40B comprehensive permit hearings, was it was much more of a collaborative process and as town council said, it's shaping the nature of the project. So, but I did not vote on that pro- on, on that and I, and I, I think I observed a lot more than participated, but I was there for most of them, the meetings.
Thank you.
Questions by other board members? Dorothy, I just have a few. Um, what if anything would you change about the ZBA process if you became a full-time member?
Well, whether I'm a full member or whether I'm an alternate, I love the fact that town council is participating and observing. I think that there are some complications with our bylaws. And I think, um, you know, town council coming in with the knowledge base, um, especially with case law and understanding how bylaws get interpreted by the courts, I think it's super, super helpful. Hopefully, they will be able to give us some guidance on, um, amending our bylaws to make them a little more user-friendly and clearer, both for the petitioners and for us making the decisions. So I guess I would work, if I was a full member, I would just collaborate more with town council and sort of brainstorm and think through how, you know, hi, are we applying it the right way? I mean, are we looking at it the right way? Are we applying it the right way? What does case law say about it? And sort of maybe, how should it be redrafted? How should it be amended? Because I, there are some, there are some provisions that could use some tweaking, for sure.
And, uh, speaking of that, um, you know, I've asked this to some other people as well. But when interpreting a provision of the zoning bylaw, should the ZBA consider the original intent of that provision? It's common sense meeting or something else? Have you seen it done in the past and how do you, what do you think?
I think we sh- I, I think how we've looked at it before is how it's been applied, you know, how it's historically been applied. I think that's how we've approached our decisions. Certainly with town council there, um, giving us some guidance in terms of how case law would interpret that bylaw is really super helpful. I do recall one particular matter that came in front of us. And, um, I was on town meeting when that bylaw went into a- and, um, I was on town meeting when that bylaw went into effect. And so I remember the conversations with regard to the bylaw and what its purpose was, and the rest of the zoning board wasn't seeing it that way, because they didn't have that background knowledge. Um, that would have to be, I mean, I think it would be important to understand what the purpose was behind the law, and I think that would be, I would definitely use town council to give us guidance on that, and maybe even give us a, you know, another crash course on, on how to use that background, that legislative history behind it.
Thanks. Um, and whose voices are the most important in special permit or site plan review applications? Town staff, committees, landowners, the parties in, in interest, or other residents?
Um, as I said, we're sort of, you know, we're fact-finders, like, we're looking at facts. So if we're getting all of the facts we need from, um, the petitioner, and, you know, there's, there's no abutters present, I mean, then it's the petitioner, it's those facts. I mean, it, especially, it's what the law requires, right? So, I mean, abutters can come in front of us, and yes, we'll listen to their concerns, but if the law doesn't provide an opportunity for those, for those abutters to have a say in how, how the decision's made, well, we really have to give preference to, you know, the facts that apply to that particular law. I don't think it's sort of, um, I think people feel that they should have a say as an abutter, um, and maybe the design review committee feels like they should have an essay, a, a, a bigger say in terms of the structure of the house, but if legally that doesn't have to be required, it doesn't have to be required. I mean, we ha, we've had situations in front of us with different design review committees, right? Not the current consti, not, not the current committee, but like, a prior one, where their ask was unreasonable, and it wasn't, there was no legal foundation for them to ask that. And so when we wrote our decision, we had to explain in our decision why we were making that decision, sort of contrary to what the design review committee had decided. Does that, does that make sense?
Sure.
You know, so you sort of always have to sort of, um, you know, look at the facts and, and see if that's relevant to what you're trying to decide. Keeping in mind that, you know, it's, it's the law, right? It's the bylaw, that's what matters the most.
Great. And finally, what are your thoughts about current and future residential and commercial development, including the proposed affordable housing development in Winchester?
What I personally feel?
Yeah, well, what do you think of it, and, you know, how, how would you-
Well, I think we have-
How would you, how would that affect your ability, if you were a full-time member on the board, to be impartial?
Well, so, I'm always impartial, no matter what I feel. I feel really strongly, I'm sure everyone here on this board knows that I feel really strongly about various developments in town that have, you know, that we've heard in front of town meeting. Um, but that would never, ever impact my ability to be objective on that board, no way. And I think, you know, development is good, I mean, I think affordable housing is great. And, you know, it's, but obviously, you have to consider all, you know, you have to consider the various interests. The petition comes in front of us, we have to look at the facts, and we apply the law. But I would never allow my personal, um, opinion, or how I, or, or how I vote as a town meeting member, to impact my decision-making on the board, no way. And if I, and if I felt like it was impacting that, then I would recuse myself for sure, absolutely.
I know, during some of the projects that we've had, come before town meeting, you've been passionate, um, about, um, stating your opinion on those, um, speaking at town meeting, and outside of town meeting, on social media, at hearings, and things like that. Um, do you think if those same projects came before you, you could be impartial? Or do you think you'd need to recuse yourself?
I think I could be impartial, but I think that if it was going to create an appearance of, of subjectivity, and that people were going to think that because of what I've said, that we weren't going to be impartial, then I would recuse myself and let another member be, you know, be on that decision-making body, because I wouldn't wanna compromise, um, you know, the reputation of the board as being an objective decision-making body.
And how would that, who, would you make that decision, or would you look to great guidance to make that decision? How, how would that decision be ultimately made?
I think I, um-
I'll do it.
So make the decision?
We all love it, come on.
No, I mean, I, yeah, no, I think I would, I mean, I would probably talk to town couns, I mean, I guess I would probably talk to town council about that, because that would obviously be, um, something that they could give me an objective opinion on.
Okay.
But certainly, and I mean, it would, I mean, if I was getting, if I was getting feedback, you know, from other sources, that it appeared that I wasn't being, that I couldn't be objective, well, that would give me my answer right there, right? I'm not gonna sit there and defend myself and try to convince people, because, you know, they have their opinion.
Okay, thank you.
Although I could sit on it and make the decision, and, and prove them wrong too, right?
Any ques, other questions for Dorothy? All right, thank you, Dorothy, Dorothy.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Uh, next up, we have Mark Anderson.
Evening, everyone.
Evening. Um, why don't you start by telling us why you're interested in being on the ZBI?
Sure. Uh, Mark Anderson, I've been in town for thirteen or so years, um, live over on Highland Avenue, uh, my wife and, my wife and three kids, uh, interested on the board, so I, I'm a lawyer by background, uh, no longer practicing anymore, but, uh, in law school, took basically every real estate and land use class you could take, and every trust and estates class. I stayed away from the litigation word, because real lawyering scared me, and so, uh, was more interested in kind of the transactional wealth side. Um, also happened to graduate in two thousand nine, which is probably the worst time to go be a real estate lawyer, as folks might remember, um, and so, uh, transitioned to the, the trusts and estates practice, and now in wealth management. Uh, but very much still interested in real estate, how folks use homes, land use, all that fun stuff. Um, so, just by way of background. Uh, the reason I'm here, um, I don't have the experience of everyone else having sat on a ZBA for many years, um, but I've been in front of our own ZBA twice now, and it was a less-than-enjoyable experience, and so, uh, just hoping to bring a different voice, um, to the board, to be a, a place where it's not just a, you know, make you jump through a bunch of hoops and eventually say no, uh, but use the board as a way to take all the stakeholders' inputs, and come to a compromise, a conclusion, some reasonable answer, as opposed to just keep spending money until you get tired of spending money and you go away. So, that's my quick background.
Okay, uh, questions for Mark? Anyone?
We're all looking to you to do the first one.
So, based on experience, I mean, do you think it's the, uh, ZBA's job to shape a project?
I think it is the ZBA's job to take what is given to them in front of, in the bylaw, the actual language, the rules of which they're supposed to apply, the tests, the standards, whatever the case may be, um, and apply those with case law in mind, and with the intent of the statute behind it as well. Again, speaking of my own personal experience, I don't know if that was the case, and so having, being able to take all that in, and yes, shape the project with all that in mind, I think would be the role.
Or we should compromise, right?
Compromise, okay. Yeah.
So you feel, yeah, I, I just wanna get to the bottom, it's like, so do you, not that you felt deceived, but did you, you feel like, hey, I check off these eight boxes, pay my fee, and I pop out with an approval?
I think, I think it's probably-
We, is that, no, but is that what you understand what, did you think that's the way the process was gonna be? Was that the way it's explained to you, or did you have to retain counsel to help you go through this process?
I didn't have to, I probably should have earlier than I have now. Um, I mean, I, I don't think there's many cases, right, where it's just gonna be a, if you do-
Okay, right, okay.
X, Y, and Z, you get an answer. Um, but I do think, you know, having a little bit more clarity upfront about what the expectation is, and I don't know if, you know, being so bold as to say, subject to open meeting laws, right? Coming in front of the board from a preliminary standpoint, like, this is a project I wanna do. What are the hoops that I'm gonna have to jump through to do this? What boards do I need to go in front of? You know, get a feel for it in advance before you're actually there presenting a substantive discussion on the topic, might be helpful. I mean, the forms, right, forms are helpful, you can kind of get some guidance from that, but at least in a dialogue, I realize we have open meetings, so we can't do it, you know, just chatting with folks in town here, but.
Thank you.
Yep.
Other members?
Um, so, in terms of, um, conflict of interests, what would be your approach to managing that, should it come up in town?
I think, I mean, it's, conflicts are inherent in everything we do, so all you can do is acknowledge that there is a conflict. Uh, I think if it rises to the level that it's something that impacts your ability to make a decision impartially, you should recuse yourself, and otherwise, as long as you acknowledge it and say, "Look, this is a conflict." I don't think, I think I can still be impartial, but I wanna acknowledge the conflict, or it's so big, right, that I just can't. There's no way for me physically to do that.
And then, um, to the 40B process, have you had any, um, experience with that process, or knowledge with that process? And then, um, do you have, uh, since you haven't been, you know, on, on this board as a regular and alternate before, do you have any sort of insider opinions into, um, 40B projects as they take place in town?
So my experience is largely, as you can probably imagine, from law school, like, the educational side of learning about the 40B process through land use planning, I, in wealth management, I'm not seeing a lot of 40B work in my, in my career. Um, that being said, right, I mean, part, I think part of the role of any member on the ZBA is before you are asked to opine on something, making sure you are educated and actually understand what that process looks like, what the rules of the road are, to be able to make a decision. So I like the fact that, you know, town council sounds like has been used, and hopefully will continue to be used, to make sure everybody kind of understands what those rules of the road are. I think that's a very valuable part of what town council can provide. Um, so to get up, you know, again, to kind of get up to speed and then, uh, operate it. I will say personally, I'm a, I just support, support affordable housing. I think it is something we, we, not only in Winchester, but in Massachusetts writ large, need more of. Um, and so I would be, you know, interested in seeing more of those projects again, as long as they comport or comply with the rules, and as long as all the stakeholders feel like they have had a reasonable experience in the process going through.
So I think, um, you, you know, I think your opening comment was, you had a less-than-enjoyable experience with the current ZBI, 'cause I wrote it down.
Yep.
So, I, I guess, help me understand how, you know, you joining as an alternate or a full board member isn't potentially an opportunity to undo things. But, you know, or what would you wish, what would have made it more enjoyable, that you would hope to bring to your role on the board?
Sure, so in the first context, the, the first project we did at our house was, uh, it was site plan review, but it was under the five hundred square foot threshold for, of a, of renovation. We went through all the precursor boards, I had to dig a hole in my backyard, do drainage, et cetera, et cetera, just to get to the board and have them say, "Waved, we don't need to talk to you." It was several thousand dollars of just expense, right? That is not an efficient use of anyone's time, the board, my own, et cetera. Um, so that piece, I think, could be changed. And then the, with the latest project, you know, you go through the precursor boards, very important, very helpful, help frame the project, right? The abutters came to some of those, they didn't come to the ZBA meetings, but their input's taken in, we went back, kind of tackled the project, and then you go to the, our experience in front of the ZBA was very much of like, yeah, I don't really care what they said so much. In fact, that comment actually was mentioned in the meeting. We're gonna decide, that's how we see fit. And so, I think you have to give a fealty to, we have these boards for a reason, right? They are, their, their expertise is covering the things that they're supposed to be covering. We, as the ZBA, take that all in as part of the facts, and say, they went through these boards, they did X, Y, and Z. The use is allowable, whatever the case may be, we make a decision. Other questions?
So Mark, I have a few. Um, what do you feel you could bring to the ZBA that can make it successful?
Um, I think a fresh set of eyes, I mean, I haven't been on the board before. Um, just having gone through that experience, just new blood, I mean, I think it's kind of helpful in, on boards, so.
Um, you talked about, um, compromise and, um, you know, trying to work with applicants to, uh, get to a, a finish line that everyone can, can certainly appreciate. Um, certainly, there's gonna be circumstances where you need to make a decision, whether it's a variance, or the special permit, um, or something like that. Um, can you talk about, about when those should be used, and when they should not be used, and-
Special permit or variance, or?
Yeah, and when, um, and when, you know, if you can't reach compromise, what would you rely on in order to reach that decision?
Yeah, so, I mean, special permits and variances have their kind of rules of the road, right? So variances are only in certain jurisdictions where you can use them and actually apply for them. Special permit is similar process. Um, so I would, you know, follow those rules as written in the bylaw. And then to your last question, if, if you can't come to an agreement, right? If, if everyone's at loggerheads, I think you have to go back and live within the bylaw, live within the case law interpreting that bylaw and the intent of it. And say, what if, if I make this decision in this certain way, will that be, will that comport with the bylaw? Will it be supported by case law? And does it meet with the intent of what we were trying to do when we, as town meeting members, voted this thing into place? And I think that's important, why having, and I don't know if town council was at the meetings that, that we had, but having town council there to help opine on that to the board, to me, feels like money well-spent at the outset, as opposed to money spent in litigation later, arguing over something that might not need to be there.
So, in interpreting the provision of the zoning bylaw, you mentioned intent. Um, you know, are you, are you, is it a strict intent of that provision? Are you looking at common sense meeting, or something else?
I think you look at the language that's in the bylaw. If it is not clear, you go to the case law, and you go to the intent around it. And I mean, I, look, we're, we're a small town here, we're not Congress, we don't have eight thousand lawyers drafting all of our bylaws and all of our legislation, to make sure it clearly says what it needs to. Things aren't always clear, and so you have to be able to go back and look at some of those foundational documents, some things outside the four corners of the document, to say, "This is how it should be decided," or this, this is the risk we're opening ourselves up to if we don't decide it this way.
And you've gone, it sounds like you've gone through the site plan process, uh, a couple of times. Uh, and, and whose voices, if you're on the ZBI, uh, would you value the most? Um, town staff, committees, landlord, parties in interest, or other residents?
I think similar to everyone else, I think everyone's voice is important, right? So petitioners obviously have a very vested interest in what they're, what they're doing. The board has an interest, uh, abutters, even, even though sometimes their interest might not be cognizable under the actual statute, under the bylaw, right? But they still have, they still wanna be heard, uh, at least feel like they've been part of the process, have a chance to talk. And town staff, right, are the ones usually who are dealing with the fallout from whatever decision happens, or, or whatnot. So I think everybody has an equal weight.
Other questions?
Questions through the chair, I may?
Um, don't believe we're allowed to do that.
Uh, then I must bring something to the chair's, the board's attention. Mr. Anderson is currently in open litigation with the zoning board and the town over one of his recent petitions, and that may impact his ability to confer with the rest of the board as an opposing party in litigation. And so if that was not something you were aware of, I think that's something that needs to be questioned about.
So the board is aware of it, and, um, we'll leave it at that. Any questions on that? No. Thank you, Mr. Anderson.
Thank you, guys.
Um, next up, we have Harut. Um, is it, Ga, Gazarian, Gazarian?
Yes, Jeff, hi, everybody.
Hi.
Nice to meet you all.
Nice to meet you too.
My name is Harut, and I'm not a lawyer. So I'm excited to meet you all today, and, uh, excited to offer my candidacy for this. So, um, I'm really looking for a volunteer opportunity, and something to give back, and something that's, uh, interesting to me, and something that I can add value to. So that's sort of how I've arrived at, uh, this opportunity here. I'm a recent Winchester resident, um, I, I live with my fiancee, who has been a lifelong resident. We recently created a new resident, so I think we're staying here for a long time. So that's why I wanna get involved. Uh, I grew up in Belmont, and I've had some interest in joining the ZBI in Belmont, started some of that process, and then sort of COVID happened, things happened, and life happened, and then I moved here, so. It's something that's sort of very interesting to me, so, um, that's why I'm here.
Questions by board members?
John?
I'll start.
I will.
Never had a guest yet.
Come on, it's only ten o'clock.
Yeah, can you describe, like, your interest in, you know, you wanted to do this in Belmont? What is it about either zoning, or land use, or houses, that particularly- What is it about either zoning or land use or houses that particularly captures your interest?
Sure, all of it. So, I mean, I guess I've been involved in real estate my entire professional career in one way or another. I work in commercial real estate lending now for a regional bank, I have for a number of years. I've had a real estate license since I was 19 years old, I used to rent apartments in college. So I really liked real estate, I studied finance, I wanted to sort of fuse those things. So that's sort of how I shaped my professional career. But it's all very interesting to me, from small projects and homes to sort of larger projects.
Do you think you have the time to invest in, per tonight, the dedication?
This is the latest I've been out in, in three or four months. I think so. It sounds like a lot of reading. But, uh, I don't know, I'm interested. So I think when I'm interested in something, I, you know, I can apply myself and make the time.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions? Go ahead.
Do you anticipate that, um, through your role in, um, real estate lending, that you could have any possible conflicts of interest? And how would you manage that to the rest?
Yeah, I don't think there would be many, because most of the projects that we would finance tend to be permitted already. But, you know, you may know somebody who's looking for something that you've worked with before or whatever. Obviously, you have to raise that immediately to the other board members or whoever the appropriate person is.
And then, um, as we know, coming up, there's, um, so 40Bs that will be coming through the board. Do you have any, um, sort of, uh, knowledge or training in that area? Or any sort of insights, thoughts on 40B process?
So we've worked on financing for 40B projects, again, usually they've sort of gone through the permitting process already. I mean, I have an understanding of what 40B is and practically what happens, which is a developer seeks higher density than is typically allowed by the particular land use of the site that they're proposing, and that typically the town and the butters and whoever else, stakeholders, like to have less density. So that's my understanding of 40B. And I, uh, I mean, as an aside, I think affordable housing is great. And I think also people talk about affordable housing, and it has sort of whatever connotation it might have. I mean, oftentimes, I understand that 40B is what, 75 or 80% AMI affordable? So those are folks who sort of live around, and it's good for them to have housing that is affordable to them.
Other questions? What do you feel you bring to the ZBA that can make it successful?
So I think I would consider myself sort of a real estate generalist, and I have a passion and interest, you know, for sort of all things real estate. So I, I think I would bring that sort of perspective. I'm not, you know, I don't have the sort of the technical knowledge that some of the other folks have. I think, so in lending, we assess and mitigate risk, and then we let the professionals execute the business plan. So I think that's actually something that could be applicable to a board like this.
And what are your thoughts about, I mean, you're a new resident, so, uh, but you didn't come from very far, uh, next door. But what, what are your thoughts about the current and future residential and commercial development in Winchester, including the proposed affordable housing developments?
Yeah, so like I say, I, I mean, I support, uh, the availability of affordable housing to residents. I think that, uh, it's very important that it be done sort of within the letter of the law, and that it needs to be very, um, well-considered to, to be fair to all stakeholders. But in general, I think affordable housing is good as far as commercial development in the town. I mean, I, I think development's a very good thing. Again, I think it has to be reasonably and responsibly sort of controlled, and that's where I think this is interesting to be a part of that. Because I think, as I look at this town, it's a beautiful town, there's some beautiful real estate here, and then there's some very sort of underutilized sort of sections of town, it looks like to me, too. So I kind of wonder why that is. I wonder if nobody's tried, or if there are other impediments or whatever else. So I think that's sort of an interesting thing.
And you've heard people talk about interpreting provisions in the zoning bylaw. What, you know, what, what experience do you have with that? And, you know, in considering, you know, our bylaws, you know, are you looking at the original intent or common sense meeting or something else?
So I would say sort of the, so to experience, I mean, I, as I was interested in Belmont, I attended a lot of meetings and tried to sort of pay attention to what was going on there to see if it was something that I would be interested or capable of sort of contributing to meaningfully. I think, so, as I said, starting out, I am not a lawyer, but I really like the law. I think it's, uh, whatever, I think it's a really great thing, it's a great part of America and everything else. So I like, uh, looking at and interpreting sort of the letter of law, bylaws, agreements, things like that. And I think that's, in my opinion, that would be sort of the primary function and responsibility of a, of a ZBA.
That's all the questions I have. Do you perceive, uh, do you perceive any conflicts?
No.
Any other questions? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, folks.
All right, so just to remind our board members, uh, we have tonight two regular positions and one alternate position to consider. The two regular positions, um, are, um, one to expire March 31st, 2025, so a two-year position. And then we have one that is a three-year position. And we also have one alternate position that would be a three-year position. And if we were to move Gerard or Dorothy into, uh, one of these regular positions, we would need to repost their position. Uh, we couldn't just appoint someone to that position. So we, we couldn't appoint two alternates tonight, just so everyone's aware. Any questions about that?
So two member, two regular and one alternate tonight?
Yes. One two-year member, one?
Potentially, uh, another alternate would open up.
Correct.
Okay.
So one two-year term, one three-year term, and then one three-year alternate term.
And then just for the complement of the board, there are currently, prior to tonight's vote, three alternates. It's just, no.
No.
Just currently serving on the board, so we would?
We have two alternate positions that are filled by Gerard and Dorothy. And we had, we had two full-time members, uh, David Vega Mom, Bill McGonigal, and we had Bob Tedesco, but he moved out of town. So that's why his position, that's why it's a two-year position, to fill his, you've, you'll fulfill his term, which is two years left remaining.
Isn't there a third alternate position? No?
So the alternate?
That's what we have posted.
Was one filled last year by Martin Hill.
Okay.
Who stepped down.
Okay.
That's what we have, that's what we posted, and that's what we're considering tonight.
There's full scope, six positions, three full and three alternate, and tonight is discussing two full and one.
Dorothy and Gerard are the currently two alternates. And one alternate.
So if they moved to two regular, then there'd be two alternate openings.
Correct.
Get there eventually, I do. But I understand that, so thank you.
All right. So where does everyone stand with this? How would you like to start?
I think Gerard would be, uh, great in the three-year position.
Okay.
I don't know if I have to make a formal nomination, or you just ask my opinion?
Just asking your opinion at this point. And more, more open to discussion.
So discussion, discussion's closed?
Not that easy.
So are we, are we suggesting, because do we want to fill the two regular positions and then the alternate position? Or do we want to fill the alternate position?
Oh, it's process, yeah, geez.
I know, it's, I know. I think that's where your, the chair's going, is the two regular potentially. I just want to just say that out loud, if that's what we?
Yeah, so I think we want to fill the two regular positions first, and then we look to alternates. I think that makes a logic, more logical sense. So John thinks Gerard is, um, a good candidate for the three-year permanent, I mean, excuse me, regular?
Yes.
Position. Thoughts on that?
Um, I, I think it would make sense to appoint, um, Bill McGonigal to the, to continue the three-year position and reappoint him there.
Okay.
I think we have, um, a lot of strong applicants, and we have some very good knowledge from the, um, current, um, regular and alternate members, and, um, you know, creating an opportunity to, uh, continue with that institutional knowledge as well, when there's several, um, sort of moving pieces here and, and moving positions is important.
So I have a slightly different take on that. I think if we're, if we're interested in institutional memory, which I think we are, I, I think Ms. Symboli should get one, I, I don't know if it's the two or the three-year regular position, but I think as the longest-serving member, um, and as a current alternate, and as the interim regular member now, with the, the absence of the person who resigned, I think she deserves a spot as a regular position. I think, um, Mr. McGonigal and Mr. Moreno have about the same tenure. They're both on about a year. So I think institutional memory there is, is kind of a toss-up. But one other thing I would say about what we heard tonight, and what I heard just in talking to folks the last few months, is we heard a lot, um, about format and procedure and process and consistency. And I think people that have potentially been alternates informing debate, or not informing debate, or having a voice or not having a voice, I'd like to give them both a voice. And I think that we have, as a town, I think we would, we would do well to have all of the work that's been suggested on procedures, you know, predictable behavior and predictable results, so that our, our, you know, our neighbors and our property owners know what they're getting into, know what they need to show up with, and know what to expect. So I think for me, I would be looking at the two alternates taking those regular positions. Potentially, Mr. McGonigal then moving to alternate. But I think that's where I'm at with Ms. Symboli having the longest tenure on the board. I think that, that creates institutional memory in a voting, weighing in on decisions capacity.
Just a point of clarification?
No.
I'm sorry, but I'm not applying for?
We're discussing, we're discussing, sir. We're discussing. It's our discussion, you can remain as an ob, to observe, but you can't join the discussion. Okay?
Sure. I just don't want you to consider the wrong application. I'm not applying for an alternate position.
Very good. We will not.
Thank you.
So?
So I, I'll just weigh in, in, you know, in the spirit of what, you know, Michelle said. You know, I, I think that, um, you know, experience is helpful. Being in, um, alternate for however many years, um, I think, um, puts you in place to, um, move into a regular position, gives you the right experience. Um, so, um, whatever combination of, um, Mr. Moreno, Ms. Symboli for the regular positions, I would be in favor of. I'm not sure which one they would want, a three-year or two-year, I mean, to be honest with you, but, um, um, I'd be comfortable with, with some combination of that. And with, knowing that that would open up again to alternate positions where the other applicants could then apply if they wanted to, to an alternate position. So that's, that's where I would see, and then, um, you know, then we can get to the other alternate position that would be open tonight, which, um, you know, I, I would put forward, Mr. Anderson, for that. I know we're not there, but I'm just, it's late, and I'm just wanting to?
Hey, I'm there with Mike. I agree with you, Mike.
Yeah?
Yeah. Michelle, I'm flexible on that.
Yeah.
I, I think I, I disagree with this. I think we heard nearly identical answers from the three members of the board. If you were to go back and replay them question by question, I think you'd see that their responses are incredibly similar in what they said, um, in sort of the things that they have considered, um, things that they've contributed to the board. I think it, um, does a disservice to a board that has been difficult to fill with consistent staff or consistent board members, to toss people who are committed to the board and who have, um, sat in front of you and given the same answers as somebody else who is also on the board. I think there's, you know, an opportunity to maintain consistency and maintain consistency with, with, um, reappointing Mr. McGonigal, appointing, uh, Ms. Symboli to the other full term. Mr. Moreno would, is still in a position where he could continue as an alternate member, and then appointing one new alternate, that still leaves an additional alternate seat open, um, on this board that would need to be filled. So we're, you know, we're going to need to repost, we're, we're creating gaps in a process that seems like it's, you know, we had two folks before us, um, several months ago and didn't fill that position. We're just sort of leaving stuff hanging out there and leaving, um, you know, this board just at limited capacity with a number of people that are there.
Yeah, I mean, to, to that point, um, I think where I am at is I think we need some, um, fresh perspectives on this board. You know, I've heard from a, a lot of citizens, uh, from people that participate in the process, you know, that, um, you know, policies and procedures, um, necessarily in, in the bylaws, aren't necessarily being followed. And, um, you know, there's some concern. I'd say, you know, other than, you know, the, the traffic stuff that we hear, this is probably, you know, the biggest concern that I hear from, uh, the general public on. So it's concerning. I also think, you know, the, the way I look at this board is you're going to see people who come in with polished, you know, Boston attorneys, um, you know, local attorneys that practice, but you're also going to see those citizens that come in and, you know, sort of know what they're doing or not. And I think you have to have some type of bedside manner to shepherd, uh, shepherd them through the process. I think that's, you know, what this, this process, you know, a piece of it is intended to have. And if, you know, I did hear from most people that, you know, they'd be relying on town council. So with town council's help, I think, um, you know, certainly that can take place. But the way that the board is made up right now, I have concerns about that process. And, you know, the ordinary citizen that can't afford to spend 10, 15, $20,000, you know, to go through this process because they want to do a small addition on their house. You know, so that's concerning to me. Um, you know, how confusing are we making this? What are the, what's the intent of that? You know, and I, I, I think it's reverberating and, and sometimes, um, you know, the town being exposed. So where I land on this, to Anthea's point, is I don't want to, um, you know, leave the board short-staffed. So what I would propose is that we would place, um, Gerard into the three-year position, uh, that we would place Mark Anderson in the two-year position, uh, and that we leave, uh, Dorothy as the alternate, uh, and then, um, you know, consider Harut as an alternate as well, um, so that we have the manpower to do this. The chair, um, in the past, um, and I've lived here for 20 years, they've kind of rotated through just to make sure people don't get burned out by writing, writing reports. So certainly with that type of makeup, it could be, um, it could be set up that way. But I think, um, there needs to be, uh, if you don't know the answer, uh, or you don't know, you know, what the bylaw says, or you're, you're struggling, I think, you know, town council's available for a reason. They're there, um, certainly lean on them, but, you know, I have concerns, you know, uh, with the pol, the process that's playing out in a lot of these hearings. And what I'm hearing is that it's a pattern of conduct. And I think with that being the case, um, we need some fresh blood there to try to remedy those issues. So that's, that's kind of where I land.
I, I understand that people on this board seem to get a lot of emails about the ZBA. So I welcome people who are emailing about the ZBA to include me on those emails, because I have received one total in the past year. And I've heard a lot of talk about the ZBA, and the talk in the ZBA has not centered around anybody who serves on the board that is in this room right now. So I think there are some things that are playing out. Either that, you know, people in town are directing only in certain avenues, or there are things playing out in this board that are directed at specific members of the ZBA who are not up for discussion today.
I, I don't really know what you're talking about, Anthea, but, I mean, I, I, and I think, you know, we've said this before, too. I mean, I, um, residents will reach out if they're, you know, um, have a, something before the ZBA. I'll attend ZBA meetings, other people will see that I'm on, because it's on Zoom, and then I'll get emails about things, or what'd you think about that? And so then I go to another one. It's hard to make all the meetings, and, uh, you know, it's, it's a very deliberative body and a hard-working body, and so, um, you know, as I said, I mean, that, that, that's what I would entertain, you know, Dorothy and Gerard in the, um, in the full positions, you know, Mark Anderson in the alternate. And then if, um, if Harut also applied for the alternate position, then, um, he would certainly have my vote, um, at, at that point. I would think we would need to still post, though, right, that position, uh, it would be for two weeks, um, you know. you know, I don't think that that would be too much of a burden. I'm sure we could get, you know, we're going to be meeting very regularly over the next several weeks. So that, that's the lay of the land. I, I don't know about any of the background stuff. I haven't, I haven't heard about that. So to be honest with you, so it's been my experience.
So in order to consider anyone, someone needs to make a motion. So if that's, you know, for the sake of time, you know, if there's certainly more discussion, happy to have it. But we can't consider anybody without a motion.
So I'll make a motion for Dorothy Symboli for the, I have to do one at a time, right? Can you do all three?
I would do one at a time.
One at a time.
All right. All right. Dorothy for three year regular position.
Second.
Okay, roll call vote. Mike?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Anthea?
Yes.
And I'll vote, I'll vote no.
All right, I'll make a motion, okay, for Gerard Moreno for the two, regular two year term.
Second.
Like seconded it. Roll call vote. Michelle?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Anthea?
No.
John?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. And now that leaves the alternate position.
I'll make a motion for Mark Anderson, the alternate position.
Second.
Roll call vote. Michelle?
No.
John?
Yes.
Anthea?
No.
Mike?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. All right, I think that's all the positions we have. So we thank everyone for coming in. And we'll move along.
And those will be posted.
The alternate position, so.
There'll be two.
We'll have two.
Two alternate positions to post.
Okay.
Thank you. All right. Moving on our agenda, I know it's getting late. Let's go back up to the top. And let's do the acceptance of donations. We're all the way at the tops.
Move that we accept with gratitude a donation of $750 from the Winchester Rotary Club to the Recreation Department for the concerts on the common.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Next.
Move that we accept a donation of eight thousand, move that we accept with gratitude a donation of $8,732 to the town of Winchester for the yearly winter pond treatment and water quality testing management from the Friends of Winter Pond.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Move that we accept with gratitude donations in the amount of $372 to the council on aging for appreciation of services and general operations of council on aging programs.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Great. Beth, if you want to just go through your report, I think everyone has read it. So if you want to just hit the high notes.
Sure, yeah. First, I just want to touch on the appointments. I've made the following committee reappointments with terms to expire March 31st, 2026 for Martha Hoyt, David Miller, and Anne Storey on the Conservation Commission, and Julie Broderick, Emily Dowling, and Bruce Hickey on the Historical Commission. Sorry, did I say, did I say Conservation Commission for the first one?
You did. You did.
It's getting a little fuzzy. And in accordance with Section 2-B of the Town Charter and Chapter 5 of the Town Winchester Code of Bylaws, I've made the following reappointments for a term to expire, expire March 31st, 2024 of Mary Ellen Lannan for Town Clerk and Sheila Tracy for Town Treasurer Collector.
Great, good move.
First down town was great.
I'm not reappointing myself as town chairman.
Is that a conflict?
The only thing I just wanted to mention very quickly in my update to the board was the affordable housing units at the 40B projects on River Street and Cambridge Street are now being marketed. So there are, there's information up on the town's website. There are, there is a information session being held May 1st via Zoom for anybody who's interested. The application deadline is May 31st. So I would just encourage anybody who may be interested for the units or anybody who may know somebody who may be interested for those units to please apply for them.
So this is really exciting. You know, we're finally getting to this point in town where we have some meaningful, you know, inventory and affordable housing. How are we, I mean, I know the, you know, the typical messaging, we've got the town manager's newsletter, we've got our social media stuff. Is are we, you know, could we put a banner up at the transfer station? Like what, like how are we getting this information out? Because I think it's really important to get it out to our.
Yeah, I know. There's been, Dea may know the Housing Partnership Board and the, the Jinx Center, I think, for coordinating an event as well, but.
Come on up, Dea, you're next anyways.
Good evening, everyone. Dea Jarius, Precinct Eight, Planning Board. There is going to be a forum at the Jinx Center, which is co-sponsored by the Housing Partnership Board, Winchester Housing Coalition, perhaps one other, which is.
Affordable Housing Trust.
Affordable Housing Trust, thank you, which will, it's called Emerging Housing Opportunities in Winchester. There will be a presentation about the upcoming affordable units at the 40Bs that are coming online, as well as a discussion about ADUs and the status of that. And I'm sure I've missed something.
Do you know when that is scheduled?
It is May 11th at 1:00 PM in the Jinx Center.
Great.
And I could give you the poster, but it's on my laptop.
That's okay. So, yeah, I just think if we can get creative in how we get this out, maybe a press release to the newspaper or anything, it would be helpful.
Is there residence preference in some, 70% of those units or what's the, no?
I believe there's a residential preference at this point, but that's a, that's a good question.
I'm sure if there was.
Just to set up informative thing, all, all of this, the housing thing is all done by the state and the developer. So we're just the.
Administrator?
Administrator. And, no, we're not even administrator, we're just getting the board out.
Okay.
And for everybody. So we only, we administer any units that are for sale.
Got it.
That comes out of its office.
Thank you.
And the other, other quick thing I just wanted to mention is there's a Safe Disposal Day for medication and needles at April 22nd from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM outside of the transfer station. That's it.
Okay. Thank you, Beth. Dea, why don't you come on up? We could talk about the, Sally, you can come on up too if you want, Springtown Meeting Discussion. So I think there's a planning board, a couple of planning board articles.
Yes.
On the warrant. So we typically have a, a meeting where we invite the planning board in to discuss their articles, and this is it.
Given the late time, I will not inflict my presentations on you.
Thank you.
So we have two articles of interest, other than we do have our standard report to town meeting, but then we have two articles which will ask town meeting to amend the zoning bylaws. The first article is to essentially fix a Scrivener's error in a table of dimensions. It essentially, in the RDA district, changes a dimension for the.
Frontage.
Minimum, no, it's the minimum, oh, shoot. I really need this, this, what's on here. So, do you have it? Yes.
I have one, yeah.
Thank you. I, I've been looking at this for so long, I've forgotten. So the problem is, is that on all of the districts, the minimum width and the minimum frontage are the same, except for in the RDA, where the minimum frontage is smaller than the minimum width. And what this means is that if you happen to have, thank you, if you happen to have just the right amount of frontage, you get the minimum frontage, your lot has to go out at an angle. It can't go straight back. So you end up with, you can't have a normal rectangular lot. You have a trapezoidal lot. This is, this is apparently an error that was made many years ago. If you look at all of the other districts, they all have the exact same minimum frontage and minimum width. So this is just to clear that up. It doesn't create any new non-conformities. It may actually make some non-conforming lots conforming now because all of a sudden they will have the correct width. So that's article number one. So that one, I think, is pretty straightforward. Oh, it's actually, as we have real article numbers, this is article number four. Okay, so then we have article number five. So this one's a little trickier to explain. So if you are going before, if you're trying to get a building permit and you have a lot or a property which is non-conforming, prior to 2009, you had very limited opportunities to make even small changes which might lead to new non-conformities. You were, you could do things by right, but you couldn't do very much. And your only other option was to go and get a variance. A variance is sort of like the third rail. You don't want, it's, they're very difficult to get. A variance, and it's been, you read the case law and some dude back in 1926 was like, variances are horrible, don't try them. They're really hard to get. So in 2009, when our zoning bylaws were recodified, Section 355 was written. And what it was intended to do was to make it easier for people who are non-conforming lots or non-conforming structures to apply for a special permit. So in our town, we have over 2,000 lots which are non-conforming. As you can imagine, they're mostly in, you know, the eastern side, you know, the older sections of town. So the language in 355 said, if you have a non-conforming lot, if, if your project has these characteristics, you can do it by right. Building, Building Commissioner can say it's by right. Every other project can go and apply for a special permit to the ZBA. So this was great, and we actually have documentation that this is what was meant because Mark Bobrowski, the attorney who was consulting with the town, who actually rewrote, who recodified, was asked back in 2012, I believe. Here's a case. Normally, this used to be a variance, and he says, no, this is now a special permit. This is why we wrote 355 the way it is. So in 2014, now we're a little further into the future, or not as much in the past. In 2014, there was case law which came out and said, in general, we hate new non-conformities. But if your zoning bylaw exempts them, then you have to provide them. But your zoning bylaw has to be a little more specific. Now, this is my wording. I think town council would be a little more precise. And by the way, this, this, what I'm telling you is, I believe, town council's interpretation, because he's the one who added the language. So what came about last year, and I don't recall exactly who brought this up, but the, the zoning board of appeals has taken an interpretation of 355, which is to say that if a non-conforming lot wishes to introduce a new non-conformity, they must get a variance. So this is contrary to our existing interpretation since 2009. It's contra, contrary to what the building department has been doing based on advice from Bobrowski back in 2012. And our town council, our current town council believes that the existing language need not be interpreted that way, that it could be interpreted in order to maintain the status quo. But we have an issue now where we have two parts of the government, the building department and the ZBA, which have different interpretations of the same language. And I'm not a lawyer, so I listen to town council. Town council says, we can fix this. We can make the language consistent with existing case law and consisting with our, what the practice has been, what the intent was when the existing language was written. And so what this does is, and this was a challenge placed to town council by our former town planner who said, can you provide the smallest change possible to make this consistent? And so I think he, I think he got it under 10 words. The key thing is that what it says is, it says that if you come in and you're asking for a new non-conformity, as was the practice, you go to the ZBA and you ask for a special permit. And the ZBA has very wide discretion as to whether they permit, they, they approve the special permits. This is not, you go in, you get it stamped, and it goes through. The ZBA is supposed to look at all of these things and in particular determine that the modifications will not be substantially more detrimental than existing non-conforming structure. So they can easily say no if they want to. But the whole point is, the planning board in doing this is not trying to change interpretation. We're trying to maintain the status quo and to provide essentially the framework which keeps us going. There's a separate question, which we're not addressing, which is, is this the way the town wants to go in the future? That's a very big question, which I know people have asked. They're saying, is it, maybe these projects should go this other way. We're not addressing that because that's a huge policy question. That's a question which requires, you know, a lot of input because frankly, we're saying that we're going to change something that's been around since 2009. So the planning board is asking town meeting to introduce this new language, to retain existing practice, to make the interpretation crystal clear to all parties. And because if we don't, then we, we're left in this position where we have two parts of government which disagree. It's going to get confusing. Perhaps the town will be open to lawsuits. But it's unclear. We know that people are already wondering whether they will be able to go forward with their progress. We've heard that from a local architect.
Heard it tonight. Too much. Yeah, so this is good.
Yeah, so that's the intent. Any questions?
Questions for Dea? Makes sense.
If you say this makes it crystal clear, I'm going to take your word for it.
Town council says it makes it crystal clear. That's more important.
So, Dea, when is your hearing on this? Is it tomorrow?
It's tomorrow evening, yes.
So the, the interpretation, Building Commissioners, ZBA, not in agreement now. This ideally gets them on the same page. It's the hope, right?
It.
Or at least the law. So I guess my question is, to your knowledge, has the ZBA been, in, in, town council has instructed you that this is what the intent of 2012 was clarified in 2014?
Mm-hmm.
So current town council has said that's what Bobrowski meant, you know, 10 years ago. Has current town council also told ZBA this is the intent?
Yes.
And now we're taking the additional step to add the words in bold italics to try to be even more precise with an opinion they've already given to ZBA?
Yes.
Okay.
I think you've heard enough this evening about how muddy the zoning bylaw can be. And I think there is a lot of places where it is muddy, but there are different, there are differences in opinion about whether this is muddy or not. But we are going to make sure it's not. At least that's what town council tells us.
Okay.
Yeah, I have, I have a concern with one of the words, but if the council wrote it, it's fine. I don't understand how it's not, it doesn't increase the non-conforming nature if it incriminates on one of the setbacks. How is that not increasing the non-conforming nature? But hey, I'm not a lawyer. I'm going to leave it there.
He's got to defend the town. That's what I come down to.
All right. If there's no questions for Dea and Sally, nothing else? All right. Thank you, guys, for hanging out all night. Sorry it took so long.
It's okay.
It was a fascinating evening.
Thank you. And if you want to see these wonderful presentations, tremendous planning board tomorrow night. I'm sure you all have a great evening. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Staying on the Springtown Meeting Discussion, typically before town meeting, we vote on positions. I know it's late, so, you know, I don't know if you want to table this till the meeting before town meeting, but that'll be the last opportunity we have to vote. I suspect that on the first night of town meeting, we would get through the planning board articles.
Let me just take you five minutes.
Do you think?
Should we, we have two memos.
Yeah, we're going to get to that, yeah.
Should we vote on those ones, those positions? Or are they select board? We should.
Let's just go through the list real fast. Do you feel comfortable voting on the planning board articles? Or do you want to wait and attend and get more information? I know it's a very brief presentation tonight. I've kind of poked around it myself, but you can certainly wait till our meeting before town meeting takes a position. It's up to you. Well, if you have enough information, I don't want to rush anybody.
I would prefer to wait till after their hearing.
Sure.
Yeah, I think I'd favor that too.
Okay. So we will do that.
So Articles 2, 6, and 7 are being indefinitely postponed. I haven't.
2, 6, and 7?
Haven't made it down the list. There might be more. Article 8 is probably not ready for you to vote on yet. There's eight motions and I don't have, I don't have a final number for one of them. So that, we'd probably have to push off till.
Yeah. How about 10, same thing?
Article 10 has a motion. Oh, no, I'm sorry, Article 10 is being indefinitely postponed.
Appropriate monies for the Lake Street Bridge 13? Appropriate monies for the Lake Street Bridge thirteen, is that the next one?
That is not being indefinitely postponed. So article twelve is standard article.
That's on the consent?
Yes. Basically to reappropriate surplus funds. Article thirteen is the Lake Street Bridge. Article fourteen is your article, co-sponsored with the Capitol Planning Committee. About Lynch.
Let's go to thirteen, does anyone, do people have enough information to vote on that this evening, a position, or do you want?
What's thirteen?
Thirteen is.
Lake Street Bridge Replacement Project, supplemental funds.
Yeah.
Their motion? Or, I mean, what is their motion?
I'm good with that, but is this the time we ask what the write-up, or not?
No. That's Lynch.
That's Lynch.
We won't take up any of these financial articles until the first Monday in May as well.
Fourteen and eighteen.
I think the capital ones, will we take up?
No, we won't take up anything with money until.
Okay.
Yeah, we can't, right?
Right. So maybe we can vote it tonight, if we meet on Thursday next week. But I don't know what we have left to do, before we get into money. I'm okay with it, mind you.
When does town meetings start?
It starts on the twenty-fourth. Through the budget until May first.
Got it. So I, yeah, I think we should vote on as much as we can tonight.
Can we vote on thirteen?
Let's do it.
Yes.
Move that the select board recommend favorable action on article thirteen.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Great. All right, fourteen is our article. Why don't we pause here for a second? Did everyone get a copy of the memo that's in the? So the idea here, right, is to send, last meeting, we talked about sending a letter to town meeting ahead of time, you know, just framing our articles. And so we have, Anthea wrote the water and sewer one, which we'll get to in a minute. Mike wrote the Lynch one. And, you know, in order, my understanding of the moderator's rules is that we cannot send a communication to town meeting unless the board approves the communication that goes out. So that's why I asked you all to draft it for this meeting, thank you for doing so.
It might still rough draft, but, you know, so it got too late, but.
Thoughts on, let's start with Mike's, because that's the article we've paused on. Any thoughts on his motion, on his memo?
The only thing is, I, I really don't remember allocating money specifically for a roof. I understand that if there was a surplus, it was going to go to capital, and I'm totally down with that. And if it goes to, and if, if they decide it goes for a roof, or whatever, because I don't know what's going to be most important at that time, that's all.
I can pull the, the Wind Cam footage as well. I mean, I think it's important, I mean, I think it's important that that's what. We've had multiple meetings, and we just discussed it recently, and I remember Mariano saying, yeah, we, one, one roof was what we discussed, so. But that's how we came up with that.
John asked for our elevator speech on what we were doing with that money, and we were not consistent on it at that point. I, I mean, I, I would say, if that's what we discussed, then, then, yes.
You did discuss one roof, because I was actually sitting in the cheap seats that day.
Oh, were you? Yes.
I was.
Because we, yeah, we said, Pete, what's the biggest, because Pete Lawson was here, we said, what's the biggest urgency? And he said, two roofs. And we said, well, we can get to one, you know.
But is that premature, since we don't even know the scope of the improvements? We haven't agreed on the improvements yet, and what we've seen is the Lake Street Bridge came out at a million and a half dollars. It's over two and a half million dollars now. My only concern is, I, I guess you're saying, hey, if we have the money, this is where we're going to allocate it. But you're not guaranteeing that it's going to be a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, and we're going to reduce the scope of the improvements to fit in, to leave money left over for the roof, because we agreed as a group that we were going to make sure that the school had, at the same time it was being built, that would do the right traffic improvements.
Yes, with the traffic, we, you know, we were, we were told, so we're, we're ahead of the game on the traffic. We know that that's a three million dollar project for what the scope of work is, and the debt service on that is two hundred and eighty thousand, give or take, right? That's what we were proposed. So to get to the four hundred thousand, that's what that one twenty, that, that delta is. And because with the roof, we can borrow for a longer period of time, we get a little bit more.
I'm going to put the former town engineer on the spot.
So what do you think about, is the three billion dollar number good?
So I, I think there's two, there's two ways to look at it.
Binary answer.
There's two ways to look at it, right? We have a concept level set of proposals, right?
Would that be like a schematic?
I think you could call it a schematic.
So we have a concept level, and what was the price of it?
I prefer a concept level for this sort of engineering, and schematic for like a building, so that's how I differentiate the two. So we still have a lot of public process to go, right? We just had a very kind of preliminary meetings.
So we have a final design though, too, right?
We have public process, we have final design, and then we have bidding, right? And so the question for the board, I think, is, do we want to cap the cost of the improvements at three million dollars, which we can do? And then we get, we get, we just tell tool, whatever we can get for three million dollars is what we want to do. Or we say, we talked about these suite of projects in fall of twenty twenty-two, and we want to do all of them, no matter what the cost is, and that, that, the cost of construction in twenty twenty-five, or whatever it is that we, you know, whenever we are ready to bid the project and go to construction.
So I guess, taking a higher level look at this, so this article only focuses on, we've now, the, the town has spoken on the general override vote. The next, which, you know, I went around everywhere and said it was for Lynch traffic. The question now is, and the only question before town meeting is, we're taking the next step by borrowing four hundred thousand dollars to do the engineering work for the Lynch project. I guess, I just don't understand why we're not just going to keep it simple. At this point in time, where we're at, we're not asking for anything else from town meeting. So I guess, why are we, why are we going down this path when the only ask in front of town meeting is four hundred thousand dollars for borrowing for engineering services? I guess that's my question.
Because it's borrowing for a three million dollar project.
What's that?
No?
It's borrowing for engineering services.
For what?
To design the project. Now, we have, you know, a schematic of three million, but where we end up, I'm not exactly sure. I mean, we haven't gone through the whole process.
Okay, I mean, so.
And I, and I, sorry, and just one other thing, I thought the point of our vote was to have enough cushion to do the project, and if there was leftovers, then, yeah, we would try to capital, tackle a capital project. And there was all sorts of things being thrown out that night, if I recall. So I just don't know why we're going down that path, where all we're asking for is engineering to do the Lynch project, for Lynch project.
So can I ask a question? Could you, could we actually get a price on that Lynch traffic project in the next six months? And then know if there's anything left over? I mean, Lynch isn't coming online for two years, I know we're just going to start, but can we literally know if traffic is three million or three point two?
So we'll have a better, we'll have a better idea, right, as we go through this design process. It'll, it'll take a while. I don't know that, we'll not, we won't be at final design in six months. We might be ready to go to fall or springtime meeting with a construction request. It's going to, we're going to have to figure out when we want to construct it, right? And then we'll have a, you know, we'll have a better estimate that we can use.
So I'm not trying to kill our own article, but what do we need springtime meeting to do then?
We need, we need.
They couldn't, they repay for a roof with that money.
We need town meeting to approve the, to approve the borrowing authorization so we can start the engineering work. It's a four hundred thousand dollar scope for all the engineering work associated with the traffic improvements.
Not four hundred thousand on interest on three million, it's four hundred thousand as a contract.
Correct.
It's confusing because it's the same number, but the, the four hundred thousand dollars of requesting it at springtime meeting is to fund the full engineering of the projects.
Which, which we think is three million dollars.
We think that, that the number that tool gave us in the fall, right, for the engineering plus design was a three million dollar number. But just that, you know, that's.
But like, frankly, you know, that, that number's going to go way up, so we're going to reduce the scope of the improvements. It's, it's, because look at Lake Street.
Yeah, I, I don't know, I don't know on the traffic stuff if we can say that, we've been seeing different numbers. But what happened was, we, we waited because we had this kind of battle with the school. Was this, I mean, our traffic policy says, traffic projects, when we trigger a study based on enrollment increases, are going to be included in the debt exclusion override for the school. We decided to pull it out, that was our thing.
We couldn't put it in at the time. There was, like, without hoops to jump through, right? Because we discussed putting it in, and it was, it was going to create a lot of difficulties at that point to put it in the debt exclusion for the school, which is why we took it out and did it separately at that point.
Yeah, I don't, I, I disagree, but we don't have to get there. I guess the, the thing was that we, we came back and we said, we need to get better numbers on the traffic. So we waited, and then we came back, we went to tool, and they said, hey, we think that this stuff that we're giving you is three million dollars. Are those good numbers? Yes. Now, of course, when you're waiting a period of time, numbers can change. But at that point, we had to go out to the voters with a specific borrowing authorization. So, and, you know, our reasoning then was, one roof, I mean, we said it, you heard, we, we went back and forth that we can get to one roof and the traffic stuff with this override. And, and I think that we liked the idea that it was a, a, a school traffic project, traffic safety project, and a school safety project, right? So they were, they were tied together, they're both school safety projects. And the reason that we decided on the general override was because we saw the increased interest rates that, you know, we were already losing that money anyways, just in that, that, that capacity out of our stabilization fund. That's what we heard from Roger McPeak was saying, hey, you know, just from the interest rate increase from the previous year, we've lost buying power of three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. So that general override is there as a, as a cushion, so when these projects are done, that's going to roll right back into the stabilization fund, they will be there permanently. So that was the long-term strategy, I mean, and I think it was a good one. I think we were, we didn't want to go above the four hundred thousand dollars, but our target was the, the three million. I, I think it was three million for the roof, and then we, I mean, three million for the traffic, and then we figured about a one point five potentially on a roof, even though that was just, you know, ballpark.
So we can all agree to disagree on whatever was said, but I, I just, again, the ask in front of town meeting is for four hundred thousand dollars to pay a contract to engineering service that we went to the town on a townwide vote on. Why are we not just keeping it simple and, and doing that? Why are we, why are we adding in all this other stuff at this point?
I think it's helpful to give town meeting an explanation. We never had this conversation at town meeting, right? Because we didn't, this wasn't part of our presentation.
I presented twice on this.
To town meeting?
On the, on the Lynch traffic projects?
At town meeting?
Yes.
Okay, I mean, I.
I mean, I did, I mean, I did in the fall for, for the schematic engineering, seventy-five thousand, I think it was, or spring, or whatever.
Yeah, I don't want to institutionalize this, this idea that it's going to be a million and a half dollars left over for a roof. We, we don't have enough information.
Yeah, I guess, I'm quite concerned is that we were just starting the schematic design for the roof project. So we don't, I don't, I don't, I'm not taking a position whether this should be in there or not, I'm just a little concerned about the dollar value, because I don't think we have a, a cost estimate yet for the.
We don't have to put a dollar value in for it at all, I'm just, and, and it may be that the, the, that the four hundred thousand dollars that, you know, we had from the general override, maybe we need a little bit more from the stabilization fund in order to get the, the roof done. Maybe that's the case, it's probably likely the case, because we had to go to the voters. But that is the, that, those were the priorities when we asked capital, we asked Pete Lawson. And I remember Pete Lawson being here saying, you know, at least one of those roofs, I wouldn't even walk on, that's how unsafe it is.
Right, but, but isn't that a conversation for a different day, when all we're asking town meeting for is the money to do the engineering for the Lynch traffic project?
I, I think we had a, we had a, I, I don't think so, because I think that we owe an explanation to town meeting of why we had a four hundred thousand dollar general override.
We explained that, and they voted on it.
Yeah, no, I know the voters did, yeah.
No, but I explained it to the, in the fall town meeting, we presented on it, they voted on it, and then it went to an override.
So I, I think, one, to say, when we discussed this, we said the priority is traffic improvements, and increasing that will provide opportunities for roofs or other things. But the second thing is just from a clear communication of this article and what we need people to understand, putting the roofs and in this, not this article, in this memo, putting the roofs in this memo is going to create confusion if we are bringing an article to ask specifically for engineering. And so, like, regardless of what we discussed or what we decided, I think from a, like, clear and plain writing perspective, that putting the roofs in there is going to create confusion for people. And if that's, you know, if it's something to, that becomes appropriate to discuss as we're discussing that article and saying, you know, we're asking for this much, this was the total, these were the things that were considered, then that's not inappropriate. But it, I think, in the memo itself just muddies the direct ask of, we need four hundred thousand dollars for engineering study for the specific work that we've clearly communicated was the priority for.
Yeah, and, and I'll just take it a step further. I think, not only in the memo, but in the presentation. I think we just, you know, it's the old saying, right, keep it simple. Keep it simple, stupid, I think is the presentation my teacher used to tell me all the time. You know, we just need to keep it simple. And, and I'm not saying this didn't, you know, this wasn't the discussion. I mean, I, my memory needs to be refreshed, especially at this point. But, you know, I just think it's just muddying the water, and it's just, it's going, barking of a tree, we don't need to, when we're just asking for the money to, for engineering at this point in time. So that's, my proposal would be to, to just eliminate all discussion of, of that, that stuff, and just ask for the simple four hundred thousand for engineering for the traffic, in accordance with the vote of the people. The people, the override was about doing the Lynch traffic project. And the, they, the, the people supported it, and so the next step, and, and, you know, based on the will of the people, is to engineer the project. And that's what we're asking for, the specific ask is four hundred thousand dollars. And that's the way I would approach it.
Yeah, I mean, I think that we had a very specific strategy, we discussed at multiple meetings. We made it clear how we got to that number of four hundred thousand.
But that's not the number we're talking about tonight. We're talking, I know it's confusing because it's the same number, the four hundred thousand is only for engineering, it's a contract.
I understand, but the overall borrowing is not the four hundred thousand dollars that we had for the general override. That was a specific reason. So we are, we are asking for funding for a project, the engineering piece of that, right, of that three million at four hundred thousand dollars. The borrowing on that is two eighty. We just got past a four hundred thousand, you don't think so?
For, to borrow for four hundred thousand in engineering is not two hundred and eighty thousand dollars?
No, to borrow for the three million dollar traffic project, which we identified as the cost, is two eighty. That's what we said, that was the borrowing number, the information that we received, right? So.
At that time.
So the difference is one twenty. That one twenty is for one of the school roofs. My point is, we had a strategy, that's how we came up with that number. I think it's, you know, we owe town meeting at, at least an explanation of that, because I think it's a, it's, it was a great strategy that we used. And so I, I think, I don't think it's, it's confusing, I think town meeting is pretty savvy if we just, if we put that out there. I don't think we have to dumb it down for them.
That's how we came up with that number, but we didn't say that each year necessarily that number is.
Clearly, if we can't agree on the table at this point, I don't know why we would bring it to town meeting when we don't have to. All we're doing is asking for engineering money. So why can't we just stick to that?
Because it's engineering for a project that requires debt service from a, a general over, override revenue. So it's not just engineering for a project out of nowhere, it's tied to this.
So we're going to spend the money, we'll just disclose it then, I mean, what's the big deal? I mean, what, this is, I agree with you.
I'm just concerned, I'm just concerned that, you know, we increased the number to the general override from two eighty to four hundred. And now that other one twenty that we increased it for, we, we have no control over it. It's just going to get tossed somewhere.
No, we don't, we don't have enough information to be able to specifically say what that one twenty is, because.
We're assuming it's one six map.
We're not, we're not saying that it's definitely going to be that, but we're saying, this is what we think, right? I think.
So that's not what we're saying. In this memo, it's not saying this is what we think. In this memo, it's saying, we are, we have a hun, one point five million dollars for roofs at a hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year. The four hundred thousand dollars conversation was like, is it five hundred thousand, is it three hundred thousand? Do we land in the middle, which we can replay it on Wind Cam if that's the. But I think, like, purely from communicating with town meeting, they're going to get confused if we're sending them a memo that says, we want four hundred thousand dollars to do traffic. By the way, roofs, here we are at town meeting for four hundred thousand dollars for, for traffic engineering. They're, they're going to ask about why, what about the roofs? They're going to ask why we're not using them.
You've got a great answer for it. This was our strategy from the beginning.
Is it going to make people?
They're not stupid, they're, they're totally savvy.
You can say that, but we're not saying they're stupid.
We're not saying they're stupid.
We're saying, if you're communicating something clearly, just be really clear and direct and not put other stuff in it. I'm not saying they're stupid because we're putting other stuff in it, I'm saying, let's be straight to the point, because no one's going to, town meeting is busy. We're giving them two one-page memos, let's, let's just.
Traffic is the engineering study, as we want town meeting to approve, so we can move forward on the one step. I'm, I'm with you.
That's fine.
So can we do that?
I, I just think that we. I, I just think that we need some commitment from this board that we made, um, very clear decision on increasing the general override ask, um, to four hundred thousand dollars.
Mike, has anybody said we're not committed to doing that? We're just saying, no, we're, we're just saying we're going to present what we're asking for after meeting, we're going to stick to what we're asking for. We're not going to go in this mission creep and talk about all this other stuff because we want to get through the agenda. That's what we want to do.
I understand, but I think it's, it's, uh, it's essential that, um, our decision to increase the general override ask of voters was based on us doing, meeting two objectives, right? The traffic and the roof.
I gotta see that. I, I.
I know, you, when you see it, you'll, you'll understand. And then we talked about it at the last meeting. Mariano said, again, he affirmed, he said, yes. We said the traffic and one roof. So the ask was two roofs. We did, we said one. So that was the, the point of it. There, there would have been.
I can tell you when I went to every meeting, talking about this override, the three Lynch meetings, town meeting, um, you know, public meetings, you name it, I only talked about the Lynch traffic project. And when people asked about the amount, I said, you know, well, the idea is that this would cover the, uh, the debt service project. You know, we don't know for sure how much it will cost. Um, but, um, you know, the idea is that there, you know, if there's money left over, it would go, you know, to, to fund other capital projects. I mean, that was my.
But that wasn't accurate. I mean, I, I understand that's what you said, but it wasn't accurate based on what the board's conversation was. So that's my concern is now.
No one corrected me at the time.
Is what?
No one corrected me at the time. So can you handle this presentation or not?
Of course.
Because there's four people here saying, this is what we should do. Keep it simple. Can you do it or not? If you can't, because it's eleven o'clock and I'm getting tired.
Yeah, I, I understand. It's not my fault that it's eleven o'clock.
I know, it's not. I'm not saying it's your fault.
So, um, you know, I, I'm, I'm happy to do it and.
So can you take all this out and talk, in the slides, just focus on what the matter at hand is, which is the, which is the traffic engineering? Or do we need to have someone else do it?
Yeah, I mean, I think that's, you know, not a great way to say it to me, Rich, you know.
I know, but I'm sorry. It's just eleven o'clock. I'm sorry.
It's eleven o'clock for me too. And, you know, it, it's actually, you know, um, five AM.
Hi!
So, um, you know, so.
That's true.
Um, so, uh, you know, ha- happy to do it. I would like to, um, once we review the Wind Cam, multiple meetings that we discussed this, make a commitment on the roof.
We can do that. We can do that at a later date. I'm, I'm all for that. Yeah.
I'm not saying tonight. I'm not saying tonight. I'm saying at a future meeting, right?
At a future meeting, absolutely. Absolutely. But let's just focus on town meeting. I'm not saying you're wrong. I'm not saying. And all I'm saying is the focus of town meeting is to ask for the engineering. Let's just stick to that at this point in time. And we can review the tape. We can have the discussion. We can do whatever you want. And, and, you know, and by the way, I don't think anyone disagrees that the roofs need to be done once we figure out what their, what, what this, you know, once the schematic design is done and, you know, we get all that, you know, you know, sorted out. I just think for this purpose, I don't, I just want to keep it simple. I don't want to confuse people. And I'm not saying town meeting is stupid or anything. I just don't know why we're going down that path. Um, and, 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 you know, at this point in time, so. I'm sorry if I'm, I'm being rude. I apologize. I'm just.
So I will get a revised draft and, um, I'll, I'll send it over to, to staff and you, and you first, Rich, and then we'll vote on it. I actually think that this is better as an email to town meeting member. I don't, members, I don't think that we should be sending out more paper.
That's fine.
I think it just makes people.
Yeah, I think we emailed the last one as well, so I think that's fine.
What's, yeah, and, and what's helpful is to have the links in there with the traffic images and things like that, like live links and stuff. And, um, and I'll, I'll get the, um, the specific dates on our, our meetings, um, that we had, um, in the past because we discussed the, um, the traffic work at multiple, we had public hearings on them, so.
So Beth, when you have, write the bid specs, can we get a bid? I can't, there's like seven different options and that. So we could look at maybe scaling that back and having money left over for roof. I'm totally down with that. Like, so instead of doing all seven segments, we do five, but we have enough money left over to put a roof on. I'm like, I'm, I'm good with that. Maybe we don't do it all. We're down on Lake Street or whatever. So just, you know, I'm, I'm supportive of that, Mike.
Yeah, no, no, I appreciate that. I think we do both projects at whatever the cost and the stabilization funds or town meeting. You know, we can ask for, you know, reserve fund transfer or something like that if, if there's a delta. I mean, I just think we have to focus on getting both done because otherwise the roof is, you know, going to land in the stabilization fund. It doesn't have the money to do it anyway. So.
Yep.
We need to vote on anything that goes to town meeting. So I, I, I mean, can we vote on it with the provision that it's updated? With those, or do we need to see it? We're not meeting before the first night of town meeting.
We'll have another meeting anyway, or, well, we probably should, um, so we.
Well, why don't you, why don't you reback, redraft it with staff, uh, and then I think staff can.
I will send, I will send the final document to everyone.
Or you, you can vote to authorize the chair and staff to work, um, with Mike on redrafting the memo, subject to the discussion you had this evening.
Perfect.
What? That's good. It involves you.
Or just approval, you know, by the chair.
Yeah, that's fine. That's fine. We can do that. We'll all work together on it. Um, all right, one other article that we need, is that okay with everyone?
Yep.
Can we vote that?
Yep, uh, move that we, um, approve the memo surrounding Lynch traffic to, um, uh, be shared with town meeting members, uh, subject to the revisions discussed tonight, um, with, uh, staff and the chair, um, working with, uh, Mike on that.
Is there a second?
Second.
Nice job. Welcome to the party. Uh, all those in favor?
Hi.
Uh, anyone opposed? Great. All right, uh, we just need to vote on eight, Article eighteen and then I'm stopping for the evening on this stuff. Uh, and just do something real quick. Um, the amended water and sewer rates today, anyone, everyone have a chance to read the memo on that?
Very succinct. Next.
Any issues with that?
No, I mean, and, you know, unless there's some sort of, you know, visual that we have that we can, you know, um, you know, graph or something that we can put with it, um, you know, it's, it's, it, the information itself is dense, you know? So, um, I know that we've had a lot of information from, um, Abrams Group and a lot of that, you know, visually is, is helpful to see, so, um.
I don't know, if we, if we have a graphic, maybe we'll insert it, but.
Yeah, I was, um, you know, thinking we had limited space that actually was written there, uh, maybe too long. But, uh, the intent for the presentation, um, will be sort of to, you know, borrow from Mariano's skills in presenting this and there's, you know, it's a very visual, uh, presentation that he's done before and sort of keep with that theme.
Yeah, because I mean, I, I think it's, it, it's always, um, comp- complicated information to absorb on the floor of town meeting. So, um, but I think that the, the graph does tell a story, um, but it doesn't matter. That's the only thing I would say.
All right. So maybe if we can insert a graph, but on that, accept it in the form as presented?
Yep.
Yep.
Is there a motion for that?
Um, I move we, um, I don't know, it's late, except water, water and sewer, sewer memo in the form as presented with the addition of, um, an additional visual prior to sending out.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Great.
And the other thing I, I.
Do you want to vote on the vote? Are you taking a position on that one tonight? You're going to.
Sure. Do you want to take a position on the water and sewer rates? We should probably take a picture, position on Lynch one too, on eighteen. Start with that one. That's our select board article, um.
We voted unanimously on that.
Yeah, but do we want to just vote the article?
We voted, yeah, and we voted unanimously prior to Michelle joining board.
Oh, yeah.
So you want to put a motion?
So you're good.
You usually, you vote, usually you vote to put the article on, you vote the motions, and then you vote the board's position because the board's position might not.
Yeah, no, we voted on the, the rate when we voted before we voted on the rates. It was prior to, prior to Michelle's joining the board.
So we can vote that now, right?
Yep.
Um.
You could have stayed yesterday.
Yeah, you can stay if you want.
Um, I move that the select board recommend favorable action on Article eighteen.
Is it favorable? Yes.
Yes.
I'm sorry, I thought you said unfavorable.
Favorable.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I guess I'll abstain.
Michelle abstain, all right. And then fourteen, getting back to that, um, if we want to just vote that.
Uh, I move that the select board recommend favorable action on Article fourteen.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Do we have to go anything else tonight? Are we good with that?
We need to do the two.
Oh, yeah. I know that, but I may have spent on town meeting stuff.
We have executive session.
Yep.
So.
Right?
Yep.
I don't think we have.
Home dine, like, come on, old man, get home.
We could push those to the twenty-fourth.
The twenty-fourth, we can push, um, one home. I don't know.
Well, we'll talk about it in a second.
Yes.
All right, let's get through, um, Waterfield Lot. So we received a, a request for an extension of the due diligence period to May first. Um, project is moving forward, um, well at this point, um, but, you know, there's some, uh, work that still needs to be done in the due diligence phase specifically, uh, around, um, just some, uh, the permitting set and things like that. So, um, they're asking till May first for the due diligence period, which is an extension of about two weeks, right, Beth?
Correct.
All right. Is there any problem with doing that for the Civic Go friends?
No, no, they've been working hard.
They have been working hard?
Yep.
All right, so if there's a motion, oh, go ahead.
Give me the date again, May first.
May, is it May first?
Yep, and then you just need to authorize me to sign, um, the document.
Um, I move we authorize the town manager to sign the amended land disposition agreement and extend the due diligence period to May first for, um, the Waterfield Lot.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Hearing none, it passes. Um, and then Washington Swanton Street, uh, things are moving, uh, in that project as well. Uh, but they are also asking for an extension of the due diligence period. They've asked till July fifth for the extension. Um, has to do with a, um, groundwater samples, um, and a contractor that, um, really, given the winter we had, can't really tap into the groundwater at this point in time. So they're looking to do that towards the end of April, May first. But it's, then it's going to go to the lab, which may take some time, uh, up to sixty days to analyze. So, um, they're asking to July fifth. You know, what I would like to do is maybe give them sixty days, June tenth, see where we're at. Uh, and then we can always consider more additional times, but it just keeps things moving, um, more expeditiously. Um, does anyone have an issue with that or that suggestion? I think it was the twelfth.
Yeah, the twelfth. Yeah.
Is that okay? June twelfth? All right, hearing no more discussion, is there a motion?
Uh, so we have, there's both the right of entry and the land disposition agreement.
Extend both.
And they have it set up for you guys to sign it. So we can just circulate it on Doc's side.
Yep.
Um, so I, uh, move we, uh, approve the amendments to the land disposition agreement and the right of entry to, um, extend the due diligence period for, um, Washington and Swanton Streets to June twelfth, twenty twenty-three.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, um, just real quick, the budget discussion that's on here, um, obviously, uh, FinCom is, uh, is doing their work with the budget. We don't have it, um, but this is our last meeting before town meeting. And my understanding is that some of the positions that we've proposed, um, in the budget, uh, in the, well, not us, but the town manager has proposed in the budget, um, have been cut, specifically the IT position would be one.
Correct, right.
Um, the treasurer's position got cut at this point.
So the treasurer's, um, they cut it out of the, uh, personnel budget. They put fifty thousand in the professional services budget for us to hire a contract employee, which we legally can't do. So we're trying to figure out what the intent is there. Um, I'm hoping that they'll reconsider and revote the budget, but.
Yeah, so they, they have a meeting left, right?
They have one, they have, the meeting tomorrow night, and I think they have a lot of, um, kind of, a few budgets left to vote and a few to reconsider.
So they might put it, put those back in, but as a board, I think, are you looking for direction? If, you know, if we want to be prepared to have an amendment available at town meeting?
Yeah, so the moderator has, um, has ruled that I can't as town manager make an amendment on the floor of town meeting. So I could, you know, if, I could stand up there and say, it's my recommendation that these positions be reinsta- reinstated, but a town meeting member would need to be the one that would make that motion. Um, so I, I think my feeling is that those two positions in particular are key. Um, you know, we are, to say we're understaffed from an IT perspective is just like an understatement.
Yeah.
Um, and it's frankly the kind of stuff that keeps me up at night if something was to, you know, happen with our.
I thought they initially thought that was, was a great idea to be, when we first went to FinCom, right?
Yeah, initially.
Okay.
I think there was some. But I think we're also learning our lessons, you know, as we go through the planning process and not having a planner here. I think we're also learning, you know, not having redundancy is a, is a huge problem, so, um. You know, I just want to be prepared for town meeting. So this is something, you know, that's not going to come up the first night, but, you know, staff would need to work on, you know, now to get this, to this ready. And so Beth, I think, is looking for us because she can't make it because that's what the moderator, moderator has ruled. Uh, you know, to have a body available to make these amendments on her behalf. And so is that, these are things that we originally supported. Um, I don't think Michelle was here at the time, um, but, um, you know, is, do we feel strongly enough about them to, you know, have them?
Yeah, I do.
Supported, to support the town manager in this effort.
Um, I, you know, I don't know. I mean, you weigh in. I mean, I know it's a lot, but, I mean, I think that you were here for some of our discussion on this stuff, right? No?
Yep.
Yep.
I just want to see if FinCom comes out, I guess. We'll see their numbers. Because if they get the fifty out of professional services into personnel or it somehow comes back, maybe it's one motion. I don't know, right?
Yeah, so I had requested, I had added seventy-five.
It's the IT position maybe, and maybe not so much the treasurer type.
I had added seventy-five thousand, um, to the professionals, to the personal services budget for the treasurer. And they reduced it by twenty-five and moved it to professional services.
So, yeah, I guess i- if there's enough of us that support this, staff will begin preparing for it. And then ultimately we can decide as we get closer to town meeting, correct, you know, the first meeting we have on the twenty-fourth, you know, whether we are going to pursue it or not.
I mean, we know what the amendment would be anyway, right? So we've got the positions, we've got the numbers, so, um, you know, so.
Yeah, I think it depends on, like you said, it depends on what their final vote is.
What articles in the budget?
Budget, um, article.
It's going to be late.
Twenty-four? Oh, I have the list right here. Hold on.
Twenty. Twenty.
Twenty, nineteen.
Oh.
Nineteen, okay. So it's like night two, three.
It's probably three.
It's gonna be three.
Day three.
Yep.
Could be night eight.
Probably starting night three.
Time to see.
I just, I'm, I'm, I'm just saying afterwards, like, we have quite a few things on the consent and we're definitely postponing a few.
That's true.
Oh, that's right.
So.
So it could be, um.
I didn't, I didn't finish that.
I just want staff, staff wants to be prepared, so that's the other.
And, and, I mean, like particularly, as we've talked about the IT position before, it's, it's critical that that's included. I think it's, it's sort of reckless to omit that and have no redundancy for an incredibly critical role.
All right, so do we want to take a formal vote on that or do we just want to say, you know, start?
I wouldn't vote on anything tonight because I want to see where FinCom lands over the next.
And we can, I mean, having that at FinCom, Chair, you can ask FinCom to come to our meeting on the twenty-fourth or we can ask them to explain to us the thinking behind it. I mean, it sounds like you've had conversations.
Yeah, we talked to them last week.
Try to prepare staff to do so, but we could all hear the, was there thought around the IT position or the contract versus, you know, seventy-five fifty?
FinCom was here for a discussion of that too.
Yeah, they were.
Yeah, well, I wasn't, but I'm just saying, if, if we understand where they land, we could, they could come in before town meeting. One of them could anyway.
Sorry, so why don't you have that prepared, be ready, we can, we'll further discussion as we move, see how everything plays out. All right, so that was the only thing on the budget, um, and then the ink affair, uh, there's a request to, sorry, I'm just rolling through this stuff.
Go ahead.
Uh, the, um, they want to close this, that, that side of Skilling's Road on Wednesday rather than typically Friday, which is the side that goes from, in both directions, uh, which goes from, you know, the five-way intersection towards the high school, which is typically not what they do. Uh, so that's going to cut off access.
What, what about the Jenks? What does that do to the Jenks then?
Well, the Jenks at that point is, is shut down because the parking lot shut down and that one side of Skilling's Road is closed as well.
So on Tuesday, the town hall and Jenks parking lot is closed completely at four thirty, which is standard. It's just typically what they do is close Skilling's in one, in one direction at nine AM on Wednesday, and they close it in both directions at nine AM on Friday. And this year they're asking for Skilling's to be closed, but in both directions on Wednesday at ten AM.
And the reason for this is they need extra time to set up. They don't have as many carnival employees working. So they need extra time to get those rides set up because they have less manpower. They can't do it as fast, is what they've explained.
I guess that's not really an option.
So, you know, one thing that I was thinking was that maybe we could compromise rather than Wednesday, give them Thursday morning after drop off. So it gives them an extra twenty-four hours than they typically have. But, um, I think there's some concern about access to the high schools, you know, for so long. I mean, that means buses can't get down there. I mean, fire trucks will have a tough time. Um, you know, just the nature.
Basically Wednesday afternoon, Thursday morning and afternoon, Friday morning and afternoon. The only access to the high school would be from Main Street.
Shore Road.
The Shore Road, yep.
Yep. So if you all feel Wednesday's fine, that's great. I don't, I just thought if there's a compromise that needed to be, then maybe we say after drop off on Thursday. Whatever you guys think. If it doesn't bother you, then we can say Wednesday.
If we can get Thursday, see if we can get Thursday.
Thursday seems like it makes more sense, um, and it's.
Yeah, all right, so, do you wanna vote on that?
I think that would be helpful.
Okay.
Yeah.
Is there a motion?
I think you could approve everything they have in their letter, except for the, you know, your, the closure, the Skilling's closure would start both directions at ten AM on Thursday instead.
Okay. So I think the motion would be, we approve everything in INCAs correspondence concerning street closures of the fair, except for, Skilling's would be closed in both directions starting on Thursday morning, ten AM rather than Wednesday morning.
So I, um, move that we approve the requested road closures for, um, the INCa Fair for twenty twenty-three, um, with the exception that Skilling's Road, um, closes in both directions on Thursday at ten AM, and that would be allowing for Skilling's Road to close in one direction, Wednesday morning.
Agreed.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, great, um, our consent agenda, can we have a supplemental consent agenda?
Uh, I move that we approve the consent agenda for Monday, April tenth, twenty twenty-three, as, um, posted.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Move that we approve the supplemental, uh, consent agenda for Monday, April tenth, twenty twenty-three, as posted.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And then, if we, we do have to go back to executive session, so if there's a motion to adjourn to executive session, not to return to public session?
Motion to adjourn to executive session, not to return to public session.
Second.
Roll call vote, Michelle?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Anthea?
Yes.
I vote yes as well, thank you, Wind Cam, have a good night.